Council meeting at 7:00 for Tuesday, September 6th, if you can believe that already. All council members are present. Would you please stand with me and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our first item of business is something we get to do really cool. And I'm going to invite a couple of my friends, Jordan and Martha Washington down here, from the Daughters of the American Revolution.
Sons of the American Revolution.
Sons and sons of the American Revolution. Glad I didn't forget the Daughters of the American Revolution, so. President? Are y'all coming in?
We have other members of the Daughters.
Great. Indian Daughters and Sons. And we'll have pictures, our communications are come up pictures on YouTube. So come on, Mr. President, and I'll stand right over here. My block pod. All right, we'll get it. All right. All right. This is a proclamation, whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 6th through 22nd as Constitution Week, now therefore, I, Jeff Coeur, Mayor of the Town of Parker, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the Town of Parker, hereby proclaim the week of September 16th through the 22nd, 2022, as Constitution Week, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibility which that privilege involves. Thank you, guys. Before we do that, I'm going to have Darcy explain what the Daughters of the American Revolution are and why Constitution Week is so important.
The Daughters of the American Revolution is a British society where the members descend from individuals who gave either patriotic service by paying a tax, civil service by serving in the position of a mayor or a councilman or a judge, or actually fought for the liberty of our country. What we do on Constitution Week is go about and try to educate our citizens to the importance of the document of the Constitution. And we invite everyone here and everyone in the community to join us September 17th at O'Brien Park, where we'll be in gathering between 12:30 and 12:45 in the afternoon. And at exactly 1:00, in unison with other individuals across the nation, we will ring bells for one minute in commemoration of the exact time the Constitution was signed.
Thank you. All right. So we're going to have the council stand up behind us. We'll get some pictures and we'll see. Unless you have anything you can add on the Sons of the American Revolution.
The Sons of the American Revolution, we were founded in 1889. We are descendants just like Martha's, only it's the Sons of the American Revolution. And we've had 17 U.S. Presidents that have been members of the organization. Our objectives are to celebrate and honor our ancestors and celebrate patriotism and education, particularly in what it means to be an American and what it means to be a patriot. And so we're privileged to have this opportunity. And the bell ringing, it's a BYOB. Everybody ring their own bell. We're all going to stand out there at O'Brien Park, and we're going to ring that bell for 60 seconds. And I would also mention that we are also coming on the celebration of the 250th anniversary and the signing of the Declaration of Independence. And we're very actively involved in that. And that's something that's very important, that people get reminded of what that means. So that's what we're about. And thank you.
Council, can I get you to take a half step that way? Perfect.
Can they see you, Josh?
All right, here we go. One, two, and three. Take a couple more. One, two, three. And one more. One, two, and three. All right, thank you.
Seems to please do a picture taken in this year.
Yep. ABC.
All right, next up on our agenda is public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for town residents and other interested individuals to speak to items not on the agenda. This comment period is for the first 30 minutes of the meeting, and if there's any follow-up, we will have that at the last 30 minutes of the meeting. And you must sign up ahead. The council will accommodate as many speakers as possible during this time, but if public comment extends before the allotted 30 minutes, the town council will continue that at the end of the meeting. So we have received a number of public comments. Will be entered into the record and the minutes regarding the My Main Street Project. And do we have any comments from the public not on items on the agenda? So let's see. I have listed here Arlyn Cook, but you're on an agenda topic, right? Or did you want something not on the agenda?
I don't think it's on the agenda.
Okay, come on up.
Hi again.
Hello. Arlyn.
Arlyn Cook, 12507 Venable Creek Street, Parker, Stro Ranch.
Okay, Arlyn, before you, can you, there you go.
Is this better?
Yes, ma'am.
You want me to repeat?
Yeah, if you could. Your name and address for the record.
Okay. Arlyn Cook, 12507 Venable Creek Street, Parker's Stro Ranch. Yes, we are still here. And yes, we are still addressing Motzenbacher issues. The long-awaited traffic light at the intersection of French Creek and Motzenbacher that was supposed to resolve our traffic issues is up and operating. However, it has not slowed down the speed, nor has it been enforced on any of the Motzenbacher sector. If anything, speeds have increased as the traffic coming off Hess Road heading south now has two full lanes to accelerate through. Also, the northbound lanes after Kaiser Creek Light, where the vehicles still scream around the visually impaired curve, accelerate down the hill, has not gone away, nor has it been addressed, and still remains a grave danger. As a part, as Hess, I pointed out last fall, when you cross Hess Road going north on Motzenbacher, the speed limit immediately drops to 35 miles per hour. And this is not even near any residential areas. Later, it drops to 30 miles per hour, but there are homes that are set way back from the road, and then it eventually drops to 25 miles an hour. Noted, we're at 40 miles an hour that nobody obeys. Also, last fall, the mayor attended one of our HOA meetings, thank you, when we were discussing the abundance of construction traffic. He proposed that the construction traffic would be limited from Hess to French Creek only, to allow for the construction traffic going in and out of Anthology. And yet, we still have a lot of 18-wheelers that are bustling up and down the length of Motzenbacher. I would like to reiterate, Motzenbacher, along Stro Ranch, was a residential street that the Town of Parker decided to redesignate as an arterial road long after Stro Ranch was plotted, approved, and construction well underway. The Town of Parker has created this problem, and it's a nightmare due to very poor planning on its part. Let's get it fixed before there is another fatality like the one at J. Morgan and Natay. I ask that you be proactive, not reactive. We need the speed limit lowered and enforced. They go hand in hand. Once again, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Cook. Next up is Ron and Pam Sterling. Oh, okay. Next up is Mr. Steve Jewitt. Steve, give me just a second here to reset my clock.
And the next person will probably have to lower this.
Absolutely. Great. Go ahead. Your name and address for the record.
Steve Jewitt, on a home at 12521 South Sopras Creek Drive in Parker. And thank you for letting me speak this evening. Somewhat related to Arlyn's comment, I'd like to comment briefly on the completion of Chambers Road. As you, I'm sure, recall, last November at this town council meeting, the arrangements for that completion were formalized. And we were told the plan was to begin construction in the first half of 2022 with completion in 2023. It's now September. I look at that construction area every day, and there has not been any sign of construction. So we've essentially gone four months of prime construction weather with absolutely no work done on Chambers Road. I want to point out that this results in a lot of increased traffic, the absence of Chambers Road, increased traffic, construction trucks, and speeding on Motzenbacher, as Arlyn pointed out earlier. The vast majority of this traffic is non-local. It's on Motzenbacher. It's people going to or from distant locations, and some are careless, some are downright dangerous. Just late last year, my daughter pulled out onto Motzenbacher, and no cars in sight. As she started down towards Hess, someone came up immediately on her rear bumper as she got to the speed limit, stayed on her bumper at the next traffic light. The person got out of their car, walked to her window, yelled at her, cursed, actually, that she was not going fast enough. She was going the speed limit. They punched her window and spit on the window. The police identified this person as someone that lives in Aurora. So it's non-local traffic. And as I said, some of these people are just downright dangerous. So what we'd like to do is to make sure that Chambers receives priority. I'd like to request three things. One, that the town council find out why there's been a delay in the completion of Chambers. Number two, that this project be given a high priority by the town staff and the town to get started, as it appears to be very late. And then third, I think it would be a good idea to invite the developer back who discussed this completion and find out exactly why there's been the delay and when the completion will occur. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Madam Town Manager, could we get Director Williams to give Mr. Jewitt an update on the project on Chambers?
Yes.
Thank you. So Steve, we'll have Director Williams reach out to you about then, give you an update. Great, thanks. All right, moving on to any other public, any other public comment for items not on the agenda. Yep. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to reports, items, and comments from mayor and council. I'll start to my far left, Councilmember Hefta.
Well, it's been a busy couple of weeks. We've had some really wonderful events in Parker. So on August 27th, I had the joy of going to Art in the Park with my children and seeing all the wonderful vendors there and the wonderful artwork displayed. And also checking up on the construction, very excited, children about O'Brien Park getting new amenities. On August 29th, took a development tour with fellow town council members, and we did tour many different development sites in Parker for a good morning. That was very informative to see what is happening in Parker, from Mr. Tom Williams, Director of Public Works, and Mr. John Fusa, Director of Planning. On September 5th, had a great celebration at the, for the last day, Labor Day in O'Brien Park with my family and children. Thanks.
Great. Councilmember Barrington.
Thank you. It has been a really busy few weeks. On October 8, October, August 18th, I met with a citizen involving some of his concerns regarding the town and was definitely able to address some of those concerns, but look forward to meeting with them again. And I appreciate just being able to meet with citizens and having coffee. August 20th was the mayor's day of service, and busy day for everyone. Helped pick up trash for the Downtown Business Alliance Adopt a Street. And from there, went directly to King Supers in Cottonwood, where we passed out a list for much-needed food and hygiene products for C-Cor. And the drive turned out to be extremely successful, and we might get an update on that tonight. Actually, maybe not. But so thank you for everyone who volunteered. The next day, August 21st, we had a, the town had a booth at Farmer's Market, where we offered just a casual forum, allowing an opportunity for connection between residents and council. And then that evening, attended a C-Cor gala. The following week, I was actually at a real estate conference. And then the 29th, we, several of us attended the development tour that Councilmember Hefta referenced. And the most exciting part, for the, for three days, from the 29th through the 31st, I was lucky enough to be on an advisory panel for the Parker Youth Commission. Councilmember Pogue and three amazing staff members, we were all involved in this. And we were just pretty overwhelmed with the turnout. We had 13 candidates for the commission. And the caliber of these candidates, it was so refreshing. And I'm really excited that a lot of our youth are stepping up to be involved in our municipal government. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dyak.
Thank you very much. On the 16th, E470, as Chair, I was asked to participate in a video that E470 is creating for the International Bridge Tunnel and Towing Association Conference, which is September 17th, the 21st in Austin. So I did that. The 19th, I participated in the E470 Safety Foundation fundraiser at Topgolf in Thornton. The Safety Foundation is a grant-making organization outside of the E470 authority. They raise money to grant to nonprofit and tax-exempt that supports transportation safety, driver's education, and related educational programs. They also give grants to after-pron parties as well. That's always a big one. The open, the opening for the grants will be sometime in 2023. So hopefully, if you have, if you have somebody who, who's in high school, keep a mental note and keep an eye out for the Safety Foundation grant opening. The last item, E470 Finance Committee on the 25th, I sit as Chair of the Finance Committee. The highlight of that meeting was our financial advisor giving us an annual review on the status of the additional, the excess cash within the funds. That is all. Thank you.
Councilman Hendricks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also attended the Art in the Park at O'Brien Park. It was always great to have people out and enjoying our lovely town. Also attended the Farmer's Market booth, talking to various citizens about various topics. And finally, on August 20th, attended the Parker Carquest Show benefiting Parker Task Force.
Councilmember Pogue.
I'm going to give you a little bit of a different twist on some of these, because we've all duplicated some events. But the mayor and I went to American Academy to welcome new students on the 22nd. And I can tell you that we had six stellar officers in this line greeting these students coming in. And then they come to the mayor and me. And these kids were so delightful. And I think the thing that I really found amazing is the ambassadors that escorted the new students. I thought that was a great concept. I hadn't encountered that in schools when my kids were there. So I thought it was a wonderful experience. The development tour that we all went on, I thought was rather interesting, because it's development that we don't always get to in the far southwest. And, you know, getting explanation why some developments are slowing down, why some developments are proceeding, all due to changes in the economy that are recent. And then we get to the Youth Commission interviews. That was a phenomenal experience. Those kids were so stellar. I was stunned. I truly was stunned at the quality of kids that applied for that commission. I wanted to take them all. Couldn't do it, but I wanted them all. And I hope that in the future, we get the same quality of kids. And the other thing that was amazing was the diversity of the kids. Not just all straight A kids, but a variety of students that wanted to come forward. So I was really, really pleased with what we saw. So thanks for the opportunity.
Great. Councilman Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's been well-stated already. In the interest of brevity, I will yield to you, sir.
Great. And just to, just to note, we did attend the American Academy Welcome Back, and that was phenomenal. Attended the Chamber of Commerce's quarterly business meeting out at Rocky Mountain Vista. Councilmember Pogue and I opened up, yes, the newest bank in Parker, Bank of America, down at Stro and Parker Road. And then I spoke at the Rotary District Assembly on the 31st out at Rocky Mountain Vista. And that welcomed roadterians from Castle Rock, Castle Pines, Highlands Ranch, and Parker. So it was a great event. And it was, as you know, our Cherry Creek Rotary, the afternoon Rotary is run by Cam Brightback. So she had all of her Santas out with her, too. So that was an extra, extra special. Seeing Santas out there at 90-degree heat, there's just something special about that. So, yeah, and none of them passed out. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of the consent agenda unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. So council, on the consent agenda tonight, you have items 5A through 5H.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve consent agenda items 5A through H, please.
A second.
Motion was made by Councilman Rivera, second by Councilmember Hefta. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes 6 to 0. Next up on our agenda is the first of our public hearings. It's a public hearing on 20 Mile Village, F2 AMD 1L9B1. And our staff will explain what that means exactly. But it's a gas station, and it's used by special review. This is one that has been continued from June 27th through July 18th. And I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing on this at 7:22. Just a reminder to the public, what we do in a public hearing is we first have the staff's presentation. The council asks their questions of the staff. We'll have an applicant present tonight to do a presentation, and then the council asks questions of the applicant. We'll then open it up for public comment from the floor, and then we'll close the public hearing. We'll bring it back to the council for a debate and a vote. So that's the process that we'll follow through all of our public hearings and our ordinances tonight. So, let's see. Carson and Bryce, you're going to kick us off.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Carson. I've met some of you informally in passing. This is the first of them here before you tonight. It's a pleasure to meet you, and I look forward to hopefully coming in many times in the near future. So the purpose of this presentation is for a use by special review, to allow for the gasoline pump use as part of a proposed mixed-use multi-tenant development. The applicant, LAI Design Group, is proposing to redevelop a 1.86-acre lot on the southeast corner of the 20 Mile Road and Pony Express Drive. The proposed development is a mixed-use multi-tenant development, which includes proposing gasoline pump services. Convenience stores with gasoline pumps are permitted as a use by special review in the Clark Property Plan Development Zoning District. The property is in the light industrial character area as identified in the Parker 2035 master plan. This character area calls for a mixture of uses to support a synergistic relationship of uses, which the proposed use would be a part of as part of a mixed-use development. a part of as part of a mixed-use development. The site was originally annexed into the town in 1984, and town council adopted the 20 Mile Property Plan Development Guide in 1996, which zoned the property mixed-use commercial and light industrial. Uses by right in this area include assembling plants, bottling and compounding plants, food and beverage processing plants, distribution facilities, light manufacturing, treatment plants, along with other light industrial and standard commercial uses. The current site was most recently platted in 1997, and the current site plan for the existing site was approved in 2002. Before you is the most recently approved site plan for the previous owner Golf Zone, which closed in 2009. And the site has gone primarily unused since.
Thank you.
Since Golf Zone closed doors, the site has been used for unauthorized storage of RVs and motorboats. Staff required that as a condition of bringing this item before you, the applicant was required to work with the existing property owner to have these zoning violations resolved and all unauthorized storage removed from the site. Currently, the unused site has minimal, has had minimal maintenance over the years and is in need of redevelopment. This proposal represents an opportunity to bring the site up to current standards and to revitalize the abandoned lot. The proposed uses will serve as a needed buffer to bridge uses between the light industrial uses to the north and east and the more sensitive residential and commercial uses to the west and south. Surrounding uses include a multi-tenant commercial and office site and a standalone storage facility to the north, an industrial construction equipment cellar to the east, residential to the west, and greater downtown commercial uses to the south. Before continuing with a site plan application, the applicant is requesting the use by special review approval of the gasoline pump use. Use by special reviews present opportunity for additional conditions to be placed on applications to ensure use concerns are properly acknowledged and accounted or mitigated for. Such special conditions may not otherwise be available for uses that are by right. Staff shared concerns that were previously addressed by the public concerning the aesthetic and environmental impacts the proposed gas station would have on the surrounding communities. Staff has included in the site plan conditions as part of the recommended approval with conditions. These conditions include placement of the gasoline pump service area and canopy shall be away from the residential areas and shielded by the principal building. A decorative two-and-a-half to three-foot knee wall designed to be architecturally compatible with the principal building and materials and style shall be included on the northern end of the gasoline service area and parking lot. Another wall may be required on the western end of the parking lot and gasoline service area, which will be determined during the site plan application. This requirement is to screen vehicle headlights in addition to providing a visual barrier between the parking lot and drive areas and the public right-of-way. The applicant shall be held to their multi-tenant, excuse me, their multi-tenant proposal to ensure the site is serviced with a mixture of uses and to ensure the building is large enough to adequately shield the majority of the canopy area from the surrounding sensitive uses. This building will also serve to screen the adjacent industrial equipment cellar to the east and, excuse me, the industrial equipment cellar to the east from the sensitive uses to the west. Further details of the site will be worked out with the site plan application. Staff believes that with these added conditions included with the use by special review, the proposed gasoline pump can coexist with the surrounding uses. A traffic impact study was provided to the town and approved by the engineering department. Should there be a need for a future additional traffic signal on the Pony Express and 20 Mile Road intersection, the original developer of the site has already provided funds to the town, which can be allocated for the design and construction of a traffic signal on that intersection. A traffic engineer is present tonight and here to address any additional traffic concerns that may arise. The proposed use will be consistent with the goals and strategies outlined in the master plan and in the strategic plan. There are nine criteria used to evaluate the use by special review. These criteria ensure that the land will, that the use will be consistent with the surrounding area, will not result in an overuse of the land, create traffic congestion, or be detrimental to the town. Subject to the staff recommended conditions outlined in the staff report, the proposed use will meet all nine criteria items needed for recommended approval. After evaluating the zoning information, staff has determined that the proposal meets the nine approval criteria set forth in the land development ordinance. This item was brought before the Planning Commission on June 9th, and Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the use by special review request to allow for the gasoline pump use as part of a proposed mixed-use and multi-tenant development. Staff is recommending that town council approve the use by special requests, use by special review requests to allow for the gasoline pump use as part, as part of a proposed mixed-use and multi-tenant development in the mixed-use commercial and light industrial zoning district with the eight conditions outlined in the staff's report. The applicant is also present this evening and here to answer any questions, and will have a presentation as well. Thank you for your time and attention. Staff is available for any questions that the town council may have. Thank you.
Great. Carson, we'll start off with questions from the council. Councilman Dyak?
Actually, no questions. Carson, thank you very much. I'm following with the nine criteria, and you've, you've hit a lot of them. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Barrington?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefte?
Yes. Can you go back to the, the picture? Slide of the gas station? Okay. So, there's two ways to get in and out or just one? Can't tell from this picture.
The traffic engineer will better be able to address questions concerned to the access. But you are correct, there's two. They come off along that adjacent property right to the east, and there's a shared access which connects to the site right there along the northern side.
So, that would be Pony Express and 20 Mile?
Correct. It'll be only off of Pony Express. There will not be an entrance off of 20 Mile.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Hendricks.
Welcome aboard, and no questions yet.
Thank you. Councilmember Pogue?
Yes, I do have some questions. So, I was concerned about the access too. So, thank you for asking that question. I have a question on the lighting because you do have residential, even though they're multifamily, the residential property is right across the street. And I'm assuming this might be a 24-hour operation, as many of these gas stations are. How are they going to keep the lighting from affecting the neighbors across the street?
So, the, the lighting standards would have to conform to what's in our land development ordinance. And that was one of the conditions that was raised along with environmental concerns. And that was part of the reason that staff put in as a condition that the primary building be faced towards the west to fully screen any sort of impacts from the canopy area.
That's not adequate. That's a good point because this was also a problem we faced with the last gas station application where it was facing residential areas. So, you've, you fixed that on this site. But I didn't hear anything about down, you know, focused lights, all of those kinds of criteria. So, educate me, please.
So, thank you, Councilmember Pogue. So, our code requires shielded lighting so that you can't see the bulb horizontally focused lighting. It requires zero foot candle at the property line. And then there are maximum limits for the foot candles underneath the canopy as well. And as Mr. Byerhoff noted, there'll be a two-story building there, which will also help with some of the screening of the lighting.
So, the gas station office or store part is going to be a two-story complex?
That's my understanding. It's going to be a two-story multi-tenant building.
Okay. Then, the next question I have, you know, we all know our leak problems that developed with Phillip 66 on Main Street and Parker Road. This is going to be very close to the 100-year floodplain. What extra precautions have been proposed?
So, the applicant is going to go into more detail about the safety considerations and the environmental protections that go into these pumps. It is my understanding that there are, since this previous problem with the gas tanks, that there have been updated standards that monitor and prevent these sort of spills from happening.
Okay. I would like to hear a detailed discussion on that because I don't want to have any leakage that close to our floodplain.
Councilman Rivera.
No questions.
Great.
No questions for staff, sir.
All right. Thank you all. Carson, do you want to introduce your applicant?
We have Jennifer Carpenter here with LAI Design Group.
Great. Jennifer, and if you'll state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name's Jennifer Carpenter. I'm a principal with LAI Design Group. We're located at 88 Imbernus, Inglewood, Colorado, 303-734-1777. We do have a presentation. And I also like to start off with thanking Carson, if he's a newbie or not. He's been very transparent and very dedicated to helping us proceed through this project. As you guys know, we were continued prior to deal with some other existing conditions on the site from the prior owner. All right. Just to kind of head a couple of questions that just now came up. Okay. So, the access on the property will be from Pony Express. There is a platted shared access agreement, and that will be reviewed because we do want to make sure that with the one access, we will go over that with fire, health, safety, and public works. In regards to our lighting question, we will meet and exceed all of the code requirements. It is a two-story building. Because we're in the preliminary stages, we haven't set a height to that specifically. But as far as the building will be two stories, it will be in between the residential and the canopy of the stations. We will also try to put the canopy as low as feasible as far as access and delivery of, of goods. Downlighting and then also, you know, if it's possible to use pedestrian-scale lighting versus parking lot huge lighting, all to be shielded and directed and follow all the limits of not extending beyond the property line. And the final question had to do with the location next to the 100-year floodplain. So, we have engaged a civil engineer. So, when we do kick off this next site planning, that will be a huge thing to make sure that grading and floodplain. And then also, just, just so you know, this is going to be a franchise in regards to the gas uses. So, we will be working with the gas provider to make sure everything is up to standard. So, let me see if I can. I'll go ahead and do it for you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, some of this might be a little bit repetitive to Carson's great presentation. So, we are on the southeast corner of 20 Mile and Pony Express. And just briefly, and I did not mention this, but it was in the packet, I represent Mr. Patel, who is out of Traverse City, where he does run a number of these types of mixed-use facilities with gas stations and gas tank uses. Next slide. So, here's a close-up. It shows some of the relative uses and PDs. So, as Carson mentioned, we are in the PD of the Clark Farm. And then there is some downtown zone and commercial uses to the south. And I apologize, I'm just getting over pneumonia. So, bear with me. Next slide, please. Carson did mention, mention a couple of the conditions that come with the approval of the project. We have agreed for enhanced landscape. And there was mention of the knee wall on the north. We are going to be installing the knee wall and landscape on the west. We're just not going to make it a condition. We're just going to do that. We also have a large setback due to utilities along 20 Mile. And we will be working with staff to see what type of landscape that we can put in there with the owners of that easement area. Usually, trees can't be put right down the middle, but we might get some trees down the edges as well as under-story plants. Next slide, please. So, we talked about mixed use, and this is a two-story building. So, if you kind of think about your typical residential or retail inline, we are going to have the convenience store, also known as a C-store. But we're also going to have an inline for ice cream shop, coffee shop, liquor store. None of these have been put in stone. There have been mention of some name brands going in there. On the second floor is going to be a higher-end wine and cigar humidor shop. And I think it's like an international chocolate shop, office management and inventory. Don't let our site plan fool you right now. It looks a little bit bigger for the canopy. We are looking at four tanks, two-sided, eight hoses. Our open space will exceed requirements. And our parking, we're about four spaces over right now. But as you know, as we get through construction documents, sometimes that might windle if we add in more landscape islands and other amenities on the site. Next slide, please. We, so, the Clark PD does permit this use, and it is only the tanks that we are seeking the approval of tonight. And reviewing all of the codes and everything, we have staff for support that we are in compliance with the 2035 master plan. A lot of this comes from our packet, but I just kind of want to highlight a couple of the important points that the subject property is located within the light industrial character and that upgrading the site from the condition that it currently is, as it's been kind of on hold since 2009, I think the corner really needs to be cleaned up and brought back to life. And so, I think this is a great opportunity for commercial services and kind of to mend the relationship between the full industrial and the multifamily across the street. Next slide, please. So, primarily in this use by special review, there are the nine criteria that we must meet. The first one, next slide, please. The first one will, are we in harmony and compatibility with the character of the surrounding area and neighborhood? Yes, we are. This will provide a variety of work processes and mend the, or create the relationship between the different uses. It's a low impact in nature compared to the other uses. So, at the bottom of each of these slides, because this is taken from our narrative that we've been working on with Carson, we have added some stuff that we have learned over the course of our continuation, be it from the last gas station that you guys heard, as well as just neighbor comments and some other items that have come up. So, another thing about the harmony and the compatibility is that we will be demonstrating 360 architecture, enhanced materials, and then our lighting and illumination will meet all town standards in dark sky. We do not know at this time what the hours of the facility will be. It is, it is probably not going to be a 24-hour facility. That is not the priority because all the other uses in the buildings will be shutting down at a certain hour. But that will definitely be in the next process. They also have not, like I said, they have not, they've been entertaining a number of gas providers, and one has not been selected. So, I'm sure that vendor would have their own set of program parameters. Next slide, please. Are we consistent with the town master plan? Yes. And we have kind of, kind of hit most of those. So, this is going to serve the basic needs of the surrounding residents. Next slide, please. This will not result in an over-intense use of the land. As we know, that the site was already developed. Utilities were brought to the site. Therefore, this is more of a redevelopment of the site. It will, the canopies, which we are here to specifically look at, the storage tanks, will be on the interior of the site, meaning that we will minimize the glare of the canopy. There will be sufficient onsite parking. Will exceed landscape. And then also, as our civil engineer is here, our civil traffic engineer is here as well, he can go into further discussion about how a gas station is considered, it's not a destination location like a Target or a Walmart. It's more of a pass-through. You're already on your way to go to another destination, and you will pass in and out of the site. Next slide, please. Because this is an existing site, there, we will not have any material adverse effects on the community improvement programs. If anything, we will be enhancing by cleaning up the right-of-way adjacent to the site and cleaning up the area in general. Next slide, please. Our site will not anticipate or generate an additional demand for police, street maintenance, stormwater, parks, and recreation center use or other open space uses. Having the development of this site will increase assets around the area. Vacant and abandoned properties linked to increased crime and declining properties. Therefore, this will revitalize the site and promenade, prominent a corner with activity and actually security. security. Next slide, please. I'm going to leave this for our traffic engineer to speak into more details. Our next slide does kind of give a quick synopsis, and I'm not sure if the traffic report made it into your guys' packet or not. I will let Chris McGrannahan answer any of the specific questions. But this use will not increase traffic. And as it was earlier stated by Carson, that there is already a fund for a light at that intersection. Next slide, please. So this is probably, this next slide is probably the most important one to a lot of people in regards to air, water, and noise pollution. I have a couple items here, 10, actually. I'm just going to read them to you, because I know they've come up to plenty of people. The use is heavily regulated by state and federal government for installation, operation, and removal of underground storage tanks. These underground storage tanks are planned at this time to be double-walled fiberglass tanks with spill buckets. What we once knew as steel tanks are not used nor permitted due to pollution. These new tanks will also be provided with internal electronic sensors to alert those of spills and leaks. There will be emergency shut-off at the tanks, as well as in the building interior. Fuel monitoring, fuel monitoring will occur at the site. And when a vendor is selected, they will provide their own monitoring systems. Safety measures include, but are not limited to hose breakaways, which means when you forget to take your hose out of your car and you drive off. So if, I know this came up before, if a gas station closes. So first of all, with all the security and... This is what brain fog does to you.
Regulation.
Excuse me. If the gas station was to close, all, before all sales can occur, records will be made available, and any need for removal or remediation will be responsible of the gas provider. State inspections are estimated to be every 30 days. Deliveries of gas and other products will be minimized to once per week, if possible. And then all employees who work in and around the tanks will undergo training. So hopefully, those help in advance, answer some of the questions that have been brought before. Next slide, please. We've kind of covered this one, that we will be providing enhanced landscape, and as well as the required knee wall around the site. And then finally, in regards to health, safety, and welfare, with items that have already been presented, there will also be security cameras on the site, as well as interior to the building. Last slide. This is just a very, very quick snapshot of a brick building. Modern, we think it would fit in, but we will definitely go through the design guidelines with staff at that time. So I appreciate your time. Thank you for being patient with me.
Great. Would you want to take a break for a moment to have your traffic engineer come up and talk about slide number six?
Yes.
Okay. So, sir, if you will state your name and address for the record, and...
Sure. My name is Chris McGrannahan. I'm a professional traffic operations engineer with LSC Transportation Consultants at 1889 York Street in Denver. This is a quick synopsis of the traffic study, I suppose you'd say. You heard in the presentations that the master developer participated in traffic signal contribution towards the one intersection that we studied, other than our access that's not signalized, which was Pony Express and 20 Mile. So that intersection was, when I picked up this project to look at that study area, that was my first thought, is I wonder if this is going to work without a traffic signal? Because at that time, I did not know that the funding had been set aside. And so as we went through the project, you know, we looked at that traffic study. We looked at all the uses that Jen had mentioned, you know, a cigar liquor store, the convenience store, the gas pumps, assigned all those trips. And we found in the short term, the two-way stop works okay. It's not great, but it meets standard. But by 2042, there starts to become some level E or Fs for particularly the left turns from the stop signs. And we looked at the traffic signal warrants to see, you know, well, if the stop signs aren't going to work, maybe we need a traffic signal warrant. And in that long-term condition, we do just marginally meet a traffic signal warrant. So the one item in the traffic study that I thought would be that the low-hanging fruit for improvement turned out to be the case, but fortunately for, you know, this project, that that money's already been put aside. So I don't expect a signal to go in next week or two or three years from now, but at some point in the future, if traffic warrant volumes dictate a traffic signal would go in there from prior funding. I'll also say that Jen had mentioned that, you know, gas stations have a lot of pass-by trips. Well, they're not all pass-by trips, but there's a high percentage of that. And that just means that, you know, if a project generates, I'm just going to make up a number of thousand trips, and 500 of them are pass-by trips, that means that you're only actually getting 500 additional trips on the road. Because as I'm driving to work, I pull in, get gas, and I continue on my way. I didn't add any traffic to the overall road, I just added turning traffic. And that's why we're looking at signals and warrants and whatnot. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have. But, you know, the big finding of the traffic study is we might need a signal at one day at Pony Express and 20 Mile. And the good news is there's been money set aside for that. So I can answer any other questions you have, but that's basically the process we followed.
All right. All right. Do we give you enough of a break to come back up and answer? Councilman, all right. Sometimes the breaks help, sometimes they don't, so.
I got COVID when it wasn't cool anymore.
We're going to start to my right. Councilman Rivera, would you like to pick up the applicant questions?
Thank you. I'm sorry, what was your name again? I apologize.
Jennifer, that's okay.
Jennifer, thank you very much. I appreciate you acknowledging and reminding the council that what's in front of them today is the gas pumps and the use that is that. My question, I appreciate, again, in your presentation, you answered the question that I had, and Councilmember Pogue brought up, was steel tanks versus fiberglass double-wall tanks and a flow monitor to see if there is leakage. Again, answered in your presentation. The question I do have, it ties, it's ties to the gas pumps, but most importantly, it'll be answered in site plan, I assume. But I need to know that you can get a semi onto your property to fill your gas pumps or your gas tanks. And we don't want a semi on our public streets pumping into your property. Is that being addressed? Is that being looked at?
Yeah, so at the site plan that has been currently shown, I did a quick remedial turn study. And we kind of took the flux of the trucks that are used by the vendors that the client is looking at. So there might be a couple times where we need to, on the north end of the canopy, bring it in. And actually, it's more than the turning radius, it's almost the height of the canopies. And then the final thing is, we have looked at the shared access easement between us and the property to the east to see if there would be a way to extend the easement so that there is a second way out, because it is going to be difficult for a truck to go east, do a U-turn, loop, come out, and go back out west. So we have acknowledged that, and we'll be working with Public Works and the adjacent neighbor to see if we can extend and rework his parking so that maybe we can extend that access easement. And I think Fire would probably appreciate a second access.
Well, I know Fire would appreciate a second. Yeah, I think it's very, very important to me. I need to know if there's code or anything that ensures that gas will only be pumped on property, that they can't park on adjacent Pony Express and pump gas into their lot. Is there somebody?
So I'm not sure that there's a specific code for that. I think part of that's a question for engineering.
Yeah.
But we certainly could acknowledge that as a comment while reviewing it. I mean, we would require that the turn radius show in site plan that they can maneuver the truck around.
That's what I want to hear.
So we will cover it then.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pogue.
Yeah, I just have one additional question, and that's having to do with the gas tanks. Because I know you said you're going to have a civil engineer looking at this, but I don't know what our town code is. But, you know, there has to be at least a double wall, there has to be a vault, but I didn't hear anything about a vault going in.
I know that we're switching from the steel to the double fiberglass. And I don't know if it's called a vault in the conversations that I was having with the certain vendors, but I know there's like an overspill that once that overspill area, and maybe that's what you're considering, a vault alerts the monitoring system.
But what's the volume that goes into that? The comparative volume versus what you're talking about?
I don't know at that time. I'm sorry, I could definitely look into that. I think that's really driven by the vendor, the number of tanks, and the pressures of the gas flows, but we can...
There's also some state regulations, and I don't know where we fit with our local regulations.
So those would be all covered under state and federal. We don't have local regulations that address specifically tanks, because those are state and local regulators, or I'm sorry, state and federally regulated.
You'll assure that all the state and federal regulations are met.
Yes, so they'll need to meet that. There's a 124-page document on what they need to meet from the state. And they'll have to get their permits and get their approvals through the state and meet EPA standards.
Okay, I just wanted the process, because I've just gone through that in another location. And I had to make sure I had the right-sized vault with a new double-walled tank. So that's why I'm asking these questions.
Councilman Hendricks.
No questions, thank you.
Councilman Dyak.
I have no questions. I appreciate the additional information on traffic and faults and your approach. Very straightforward and easy, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington.
No questions. I think both the applicant and the staff analysis and findings have been very thorough. Thank you.
And Councilmember Hefta.
First, I want to acknowledge your pneumonia.
I'm in recovery, but it's not cool anymore.
Yes, I understand. I myself suffered greatly. Won't up seeing a nutritionist to get my adrenal glands back on track, so just FYI on that. So again, much sympathy for your pneumonia. Your application, and I was reading the Planning Commission report, I just want to point out a small discrepancy here to make sure we have it correct on the record, as it reads a little differently in item number four. Regards to... Item number four is, will not have a material adverse effect on community capital improvement programs. And your answer did not really synchronize with the staff's answer. So your answer did not talk about the need for additional improvements. If they're required as a result of the traffic study, the developer will be required to construct them at their expense. And that's in the staff study, that you're going to have to develop that at your expense. And your answer in number four did not address that at all. So I want to make sure on the record that if the traffic study comes back accordance with our staff analysis, and additional improvements need to be made as a result of that on the site process as well, that you are going to make those improvements, because that was not addressed in your answer.
Thank you for that acknowledgement. So yes, I believe the staff report that you're looking at is from prior to our continuation. And since then, we have learned with our traffic study that funds were obligated to the traffic light with the prior owner. Now, I don't know if it's 100% covered or what that is, but we would follow through with, we'd have to look at the site improvement agreement, or the acronym, I don't know, I forgot what, Parker's SIA, or, okay. We'd have to look at the SIA to see how much fund has been funded from this individual. But yes, you're correct. I mean, if that fund doesn't cover it, this new owner or part of the transaction of the sale of the lot to the new owner, they would have to be in agreement to finish out the funds for a future traffic light. So you are correct, there was a difference between the original packet and what we've come to learn since.
Okay, thank you for that update.
Thank you. And Jennifer, so we're done with questions for you as the applicant. We do give the applicant a chance at the end of public testimony to come back and address any items that were brought by the public, so.
I appreciate it, thank you.
If you want to stay put, but take a break and take some water and, all right. All right, with that, at 7:59, we're going to open up this item to public comments. If you'd like to make a public comment regarding this use by special review, please come forward. No comments? Okay, then we are going to close the public comment at 7:59. We're going to close the public hearing at 7:59 and bring it back to the council for comments and debate. I'm going to start to my left with Councilmember Hefta.
I have reviewed the application of use by special review, and the applicant has diligently answered the questions and also addressed the nine criteria on the record. And I see that the applicant has complied with the nine criteria for use by special review.
Councilmember Barrington.
Yes, I see that the nine criteria have been addressed by both the applicant and staff. My concerns would definitely be with six, seven, and eight, the traffic and the air-water-noise pollution, and the detrimental to health and safety or welfare. And I think all of these have definitely been addressed. And two technical experts have been called in. So I, it's located in a light industrial. I think I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Councilman Dyak.
Thank you very much. I would concur with my fellow council members, one through nine have been successfully addressed. Coming into this, my concern was the light pollution. That was addressed within the narrative of the applicant. I was also interested to hear what the landscape was going to be, and I appreciate the noting of the easement, the extended 50-foot easement. And the applicant is going to work with staff to figure out how they can even further densify the landscape to create a little bit of a break between the hardscape of maybe the brick or the building that is about to be built, or that potentially is about to be built, and the view corridors from the multifamily and the 20 Mile. So I believe, I believe we are in good order. Thank you.
Councilman Hendricks.
Thank you. A little bittersweet, I remember going to that golf facility with my two-year-old, and he would beat me up a lot, but he cheats. I concur with my fellow council members, they meet the nine criteria, and that's what, as a council, we're supposed to focus on here. And great presentation, and I believe you adequately answered all of our concerns. Thank you.
Councilmember Pogue.
Well, yes, on answering the criteria, however, I want to make sure that staff will follow through with the issues that Councilmember Hefta brought up with the development funds, if they're needed, and that the state and federal requirements are completely met due to the floodplain issue. So with that, I would concur.
Councilman Rivera.
Thank you very much. Again, my compliments to the applicant. The presentation was very thorough. I again appreciate you recognizing that what's in front of us are the gas pumps. The use is a draw of traffic, anyway. And, you know, if it's in line with four units and two units above, there's traffic. So I do appreciate that. My concern, obviously, with the semi being, you know, being able to park onsite is going to be met through the site plan, and staff has reassured me of that. I will take three criteria real quick. First one, obviously, is harmony. I believe it is, in fact, in harmony, and almost even better so in the sense that you are providing a buffer, if you will, from what could be, frankly, a tractor lot to, you know, all kinds of industrial uses that would be closer to our residential homes, and then also closer to the commercial to the south. And this is a nice transition. I like to see this transition from a less industrial use, if you will, to a more commercial use. Criteria two asks about the master plan and compliance. I believe so. I believe I find it is in compliance. I also believe that anything that is outstanding is answered in the conditions presented in this motion. And three, will it be over-intensive use? And I believe no. The answer is that it has met and will meet all land development ordinance questions. Most importantly, and staff addressed this, and I believe your traffic engineer would comply with, or would agree with this, is getting traffic off of Parker Road. Right now, anybody in that area of town has to go to Parker Road to get gas. And if... And if anything, that is the spine of our network. And if there's, anytime you have to stop a light on Parker Road, it has ripple effect. If we can get traffic off of Parker Road for any use and allow folks in that area to not have to go over to Parker Road to get gas, it is always a benefit. I find that the applicant has met all nine of the criteria asked of them.
Agree. With that, I will entertain a motion on this use by special review.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve based on the staff findings, subject to the following conditions, consigned into the staff report.
Second?
Motion is made by Councilman Dyak, second by Councilman Hendricks. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Thank you, Jennifer. Hope you feel better. All right. All right, next up on our public hearings is Avalon Bay Coil Annexation. And we've got Julia Duncan coming down, so I will go ahead and open up the public hearing on this at 8:05.
Can you all hear me through the mask or should I take it off?
Whatever you're comfortable with. Wait, I can hear you. Yep, up to you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a resolution to set forth Town Council's findings of facts and conclusions as to the eligibility of the Coil property for annexation into the town of Parker and to set the public hearing date to consider the Avalon Bay Coil Annexation. The applicant, Avalon Bay Communities, Inc., has submitted an annexation petition to annex a 33.4-acre parcel of land known as the Coil property at the southeast corner of the intersection of Stro Road and Crowfoot Valley Road into the town of Parker. On July 18th, 2022, the Town Council approved Resolution 22-042, which determined that the annexation petition substantially complies with Section 31-12-107.1 and which set the public hearing date of September 6th today, 2022, to determine eligibility for annexation into the town. The town has identified the Coil property as a candidate for future annexation through the annual three-mile plan and the Parker 2035 Master Plan. Therefore, the proposed annexation is consistent with the town's land use policy as expressed in both plans. The subject property is eligible for annexation because it is located within the town's planning area, the urban growth boundary, and satisfies the contiguity requirements of Colorado revised statutes. If Town Council approves Resolution Number 22-045, it will determine that the subject property is eligible for annexation into the town as provided by the Act. Staff recommends approval of the resolution. That concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions you may have. The applicant does not have a presentation, but if you'd like to say hello, I'm sure they'd be happy to come up and introduce themselves.
Great, thanks, Julia. We'll start with to my right, Councilman Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yes, what is the zoning that will ride with this property?
Pursuant to the LDO and state law, zoning has to happen concurrently with annexation. It would be a planned development that's currently submitted, and we're reviewing that planned development. That would come before the council. At the date, November 7th, which is part of this action tonight as well, you would hear the zoning and the annexation concurrently. The zoning would also go to the Planning Commission prior to coming to Town Council.
Okay, but with this application, it gets the zoning that generally rides with the land at this point. How many multifamily units are we looking at and what was the height? Those are some of the things we talked about previously.
So that's currently going through the process. We haven't determined the final density calculations yet. There is a commercial property at the corner and three planning areas for different density levels, including duplexes, townhomes, multi, your standard multifamily apartments. But a total density number, we're working through that process with the planned development that's been submitted and currently under review.
Is there a problem of waiting for this action until we have that information?
This action is required by state statute that just determines eligibility. If it meets the state eligibility requirements, including contiguity, you know, the one-sixth amount of the parcel being contiguous within our urban growth boundary, not in excess of three miles from the town's expansion, that it meets those criteria. You're not deciding this evening to annex a property. You're determining whether it meets the eligibility requirements to consider it at a future date.
I was just wondering where we were with the questions we'd had before.
This is required prior to the public hearing for actual consideration of annexation.
Thank you.
Councilman Rivera?
No questions.
Councilman Dyak?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
All right. So yes, Julia, let's bring your applicant up and we'll say hi, see if there's any questions for him. And if you will come down and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Lyda, last name spelled L-Y-D-A. I'm with the law firm Otten Johnson. Business address of 950 Seventeenth Street, Suite 1600 in Denver. Our firm represents Avalon Bay Communities, Inc. As Julia mentioned, I'm the petitioner for annexation tonight. I'd like to thank Julia for her work. I think she's, her staff report was very thorough and her explanation tonight is right on point. As she noted, tonight, we're only requesting approval of a resolution finding that the property is eligible for annexation into the town of Parker. As part of this resolution, we would come back on November 7th, hold the public hearing and go through whether Parker should annex the property and in connection with that, the zoning. Tonight, we're just affirming Julia's findings that we do meet all eligibility criteria that are set forth in the Annexation Act. As Julia mentioned, the property is located at the southeast corner of the Stro Road and Crowfoot Valley Road intersection. It's approximately 33 acres. And with that, we would just request approval of the resolution tonight. And we'd be happy to come back on November 7th and answer any substantive questions you have about the annexation and zoning. I'm available if you have any questions about the eligibility, as are representatives from Avalon Bay.
Great, Lindsay, let me spin through the council real fast, see if there's any council questions. Councilman Dyak, Barrington, Hefta? Nope, okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment at 8:12. Anyone wishing to make a public comment on the Avalon Bay Coil Annexation? Come on down. You know the drill, your name and address for the record.
Our Lynn Cook, 12507 Venable Creek Street, Parker Stro Ranch, on the other end of this property that we were just talking about. I was not aware it was happening. So this is adding additional traffic to Motzenbacher. So if it's at all possible, I would make this contingent upon Chambers Road being completed so all the traffic from this development is not coming down Motzenbacher. That's all.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this? Come on down, sir, and state your name and address for the record.
Bruce Cunningham, 20881 Parliament Place, here in Parker.
Great, go ahead, sir.
I was wondering if in the annexation process, has there ever been given a thought to the property taxes, the net property taxes, this particular parcel will generate after all of the rebates and the concessions to the builders and the contractors and everybody else? Will the town of Parker end up having to subsidize some of this for fire, police, utilities, anything else? Or are they going to be a net benefit to Parker? If there are going to be a net benefit, I'm all for it. But if it's going to cost us taxpayers that are part of Parker money to annex them, I don't want to annex them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Any other public comment? All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment at 8:14. Lindsay, anything to address that you heard from any public comment? Which, I didn't hear, you're good, okay. Julia, any final thoughts before we close the public hearing?
Just that through the referral process, the, we do do a fiscal impact analysis. The Douglas County School District does a student fee requirement per students potentially populated by the residents, and that's a cash-in lieu or land dedication. We analyze all of those items through the referral process and through the annexation agreement require payment of funds, cash-in lieu, or dedications.
Okay, appreciate that, Julia. We're going to go ahead and close the public hearing at 8:15. We'll bring it back to Council. Councilman Hendricks, any final thoughts or?
No comments.
Councilmember Pogue?
No.
Councilman Rivera?
Thank you. First of all, I'd address Mr. Cunningham. I absolutely agree, and I believe this council agrees. Growth and annexation in this community, this has nothing to do with my findings for this hearing. Growth and development in this community pays its way. In fact, there's been, we've been approached by annexations before that we've denied because they didn't have a commercial corner. So I appreciate your thoughts and I appreciate you making it known tonight. But yes, this council weighs that very heavily, sir. We do not want to put any toll on the current citizens by bringing in new homes without paying their way. I think that's different than some other communities in the area. Regarding Avalon Bay Annexation, it is identified in the three-mile plan and our 2035 Master Plan. It is contiguous with the town boundary. Thus, I find that the petition has met all statutory requirements for annexation eligibility.
Councilman Dyak?
Yeah, to me, just this is more procedural before we can get to the annexation and zoning. On November 7th, I would concur with Councilmember Rivera and what Julia provided to us. I think it does meet the eligibility for annexation and onward to November 7th. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
I see them as a candidate for annexation also. Thank you.
Great, Councilmember Hefta?
I would agree that it meets the state eligibility requirements. And I would thank both the applicant and Julia for coming to talk on this matter.
Great, with that, I will entertain a motion on Resolution Number 22-045.
I move to pre-Resolution Number 22-045 and set the annexation ordinance public hearing for November 7th, 2022.
Second?
Motion is made by Councilman Hendricks, second by Councilmember Rivera. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yep.
And that passes six to zero. Next up on our public hearings is Com Park Village South replat. And I think we are continuing with Julia on this. And Julia, do you have an applicant on this one for tonight? Okay, excellent, excellent. So I will go ahead and open up the public hearing on this at 8:17. Turn it over to you, Julia.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The applicant's entry at Com Park Village South, LLC, is proposing a replat of tract B, Com Park Village South, filing Number One, Amendment Two, and approval of the subdivision improvement agreement. The replat would create a buildable lot and drainage tract. The site is located on the south side of future Balford Avenue to the west of Chambers Road. In addition, the replat vacates a portion of right-of-way that was dedicated to the town for future access, but is no longer necessary. The applicant also requires a subdivision improvement agreement to secure the public improvements associated with the replat. The processing of replats is typically administrative. However, the need to vacate the Point 025 acres of right-of-way is what's triggering this public hearing tonight and the requirement for Town Council to approve. The applicant is proposing the replat of an existing unbuildable tract to create a buildable tract and to vacate the existing 9.5-foot by 55-foot portion of right-of-way. It's the small portion highlighted here in yellow. This section of right-of-way is no longer needed because the surrounding land has already been platted and there is adequate land for planned streets and roads. There have been numerous replats of the subject property over the years, and the area surrounding the unbuildable tract has been platted for future development. The purpose of the replat and proposed right-of-way vacation is to allow the development within Lot One, Com Park Village, filing One, Second Amendment, to proceed while removing the unnecessary infrastructure that will not be utilized. A previous replat of the property, the Com Park Village South, filing Number One, First Amendment, dedicated the subject right-of-way to the town and anticipated that Deer Track Lane would continue from its current path from the adjacent property to the west to the intersection of Wolf Fox Street and East onto the proposed Lot Number One. With the current filing and associated improvements, Deer Track Lane is no longer proposed to be extended, and the previously dedicated right-of-way is no longer needed. In addition to the right-of-way vacation, the applicant will modify the public storm sewer at the intersection of Deer Track Lane and Wolf Fox Street to stay within the new roadway limits. The proposed replat of Com Park Village, filing One, Second Amendment, will create one 13.97-acre residential parcel for future residential development and one 1.03-acre drainage tract. The property owner has proposed a multifamily residential development with required parks and open space that is being processed through a site plan application. The town requires that the subdivision improvement agreement to secure public improvements associated with the proposed replat. The SIA requirements include the following: construction of a pedestrian trail along Happy Canyon Creek, including a connection to the existing E470 trail, as well as public improvements that are shown in the staff report as Exhibit C, which include sidewalk, curbs, and gutters that approximate approximately $500,000 worth of value. Staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan. All plating requirements of the land development ordinance have been satisfied. The proposal provides adequate access, infrastructure, drainage facilities, and design considerations. And utility providers have confirmed capacity and availability. Referral agency comments have been addressed, and the public notice requirements have been satisfied. Therefore, staff recommends Town Council approve the Com Park Village South, filing Number One, Amendment Two, and the subdivision improvement agreement. This concludes my report. The applicant's representative is here tonight and available to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thanks, Julia. We'll turn to staff questions. Councilmember Hefta, do you want to kick this off?
Can you talk a little bit more about the subdivision improvements, Number One and Two? Construction on trail along Happy Canyon and public improvements on Exhibit C?
Sure, absolutely. With the site plan submittal, they are showing a connection of the Happy Canyon Creek Trail. It's a minimum 10-foot-wide concrete trail consistent with our parks, trails, master plan requirements. They're building that, it sort of weaves in and out of their property, but it is connecting to the E470 trail. That is a connection for both the multifamily residents that would eventually live on this subject property as well as the single-family residents to the immediate west, which is a subdivision that's already been platted. Those improvements are required prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for, I believe, the multifamily and of building permits for the single family. It may be reversed, but we have triggers on those improvements being constructed prior to CBOs or building permits. And then for the public improvements, those were estimates of public improvement costs evaluated by our engineering department that equated to approximately, well, it was exactly $480,000 in value for sidewalk, curbs, gutters, improvements that would be necessary for this multifamily development.
And as you had stated, those improvements would be in before the construction of that development is finalized?
Yes, and the town requires a letter of credit for all of those improvements as well.
Thank you, Julia.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions, thank you.
Councilman Dyak?
No questions, thank you, sir.
Councilman Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yes. With this land, when it was zoned and accepted, what was the building height that was allotted?
In the Com Park Village PD, I don't have that PD in front of me, but I know that the submittal is showing proposals consistent with the requirements. I don't have the number off the top of my head.
My concern is that we have large lot landowners in Douglas County to the south of this parcel. And I'm not seeing any attempt to buffer them. So that's what I'm asking about, is the buffering and the building height to protect these people.
So that's part of the site plan approval process. You wouldn't see that here this evening because this is a replat. There is a tract to the south of the tract that you're, the lot, one that you're looking at that's more darkly highlighted- at, that's more darkly highlighted in a darker line. If you look to the south, there's an additional tract that separates it from Grand View Estates. There's a substantial, that's an open space tract. In addition to that open space tract, when you, if you were, if we were to have the site plan before us this evening, you would see a substantial separation from the south to the north where the multifamily properties began. There's actually a large swath of open space and in addition, a dog park in that proposed area.
Okay, well, I would like to have that information. I agree that it doesn't affect this vacation of this small parcel, but I would like that information.
I'm happy to provide that to you.
Great, thanks, Julia. Councilman Rivero?
I have no questions about the vacation of .025 acres.
Great, excellent. All right, with that, we will open public comment at 8:25. Anybody wishing to make a public comment on this matter? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close that at 8:25, and we'll close the public hearing on this at 8:25. Council, any further questions, comments? I'll start to my left. Councilman Dyak?
I have no questions. I appreciate the presentation, Julie. Thank you very much, and no questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
Yeah, I have no questions either, thank you.
Councilmember Hefta, sorry.
No questions.
Right. Councilman Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
No further questions at this time.
All right, and Councilman Rivero?
No, I appreciate it. I think that if staff has identified that we don't need this for a road anymore, that we should absolutely vacate the filing and then give the property back, so I'm all in favor.
All right, council, I'll entertain the first of two motions on the replat.
I move to approve the Com Park Village South filing number one amendment two replat based on staff findings.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Dyak, seconded by Councilman Hendricks. Rivero?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. I'll entertain a motion on the subdivision improvement agreement.
I move to approve the Com Park Village South filing number one amendment two subdivision improvement agreement based on staff findings.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Councilmember Hefta, seconded by Councilmember Barrington. Rivero?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. All right, next up is the public hearing on Parker Downs, F3 AMD1 L2, a use by special review, and I think Carson is here for a repeat appearance. All right, Carson, you can't pull the newbie card anymore. No rookie cards this time around. All right, so I'm going to open up this public hearing at 8:27, and turn it over to you, Carson.
All right, good evening again, mayor and town council. The purpose of this use by special review is to allow for the automotive service and repair facility Hoover Mercedes. The applicant, MHLK Properties, is proposing to relocate their existing automotive service and repair business to another existing property in the Parker Downs subdivision. Automotive service and repair facilities are permitted as a use by special review in the modified commercial zoning district where the proposed project lies. The property is in the light industrial character area as identified in the Parker 2035 master plan. This character area calls for a mixture of uses to support a synergistic relationship, and the proposed use will be part of said diversity of uses in addition to serving as another bridge between commercial and light industrial uses. The applicant is requesting a use by special review approval for the automotive service and repair facility. Staff has included site plan conditions as part of the recommended approval with conditions. These conditions include providing vegetative screening to screen parking and driving areas on the site, as well as modifying the existing electric gates to be installed with opticon remote opening devices for emergency access for first responders. Further details of the site will be worked out with the site plan application. Staff believes that with the added conditions included with the use by special review, the proposed automotive service and repair use can coexist with the surrounding uses. The proposed use will be consistent with the goals and strategies outlined in the master plan and in the strategic plan. There are nine criteria used to evaluate a use by special review. These criteria ensure that the use will be consistent with the surrounding area, will not result in an overuse of the land, create traffic congestion, or be detrimental to the town. Subject to the staff recommended conditions outlined in the staff report, the proposed use will meet all nine criteria items needed for recommended approval. After evaluating the zoning information, staff has determined that the proposal meets the nine approval criteria set forth in the land development ordinance. This item was brought before Planning Commission on August 25th, and Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the use by special review of the Hoover Mercedes automotive service and repair facility. Staff is recommending that town council approve the use by special review request to allow for the proposed automotive service and repair use in the modified commercial zoning district with the six conditions outlined in the staff report. Thank you for your time and attention. Staff is available for any questions that Planning Commission, excuse me, Town Council may have, and the applicant is also present this evening and here to answer any questions as well.
Great, thanks, Carson. We'll start off to my far right. Councilman Rivero, questions for staff?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, I was just wondering, the property to the east of this, was that also automotive repair?
I believe it is a tractor facility. Hold on one second, please.
The test here.
Okay. And then with this, what is the traffic load that we're going to be seeing? Because we're getting close to the fieldhouse and a lot of pedestrian activities, especially with teens with the sports complex over there in 20 miles. So what kind of increase are we going to be seeing in traffic?
This actually wouldn't result in an increase of traffic from the uses that were in here before. Michael Hoover is here to present more details on the operations. However, he takes clients in by appointment only, and likely there wouldn't be more than eight services per day, if I believe correctly. He'll be able to speak more to that, though.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Councilman Hendricks?
No question.
Councilman Dyak?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
And Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
All right, Carson, you want to introduce your applicant? And? Come on down, sir, right over there.
This is Michael Hoover with MHLK Properties and owner of Hoover Mercedes.
Great, and if you'll just state your name and address for the record, and we'll get you started.
Michael Hoover, 1890 Longsway, Parker, Colorado.
Great, thanks, sir. Do you have a presentation for us?
I do not. I'm just here to answer any questions you may have.
Anything you want to say about your project?
Well, I'm just thankful to be part of Parker. I've been in subdivision two blocks north, been there since 2013, and we've enjoyed success, and we have grown, and we just want to expand to this beautiful piece of property over here.
Excellent, excellent. We'll start off, questions from staff? We'll do the same from applicant. Councilman Rivero?
No questions. I appreciate you probably just came from work, too. I appreciate you in the blues, so, well done.
Councilmember Pogue?
I don't have any further questions.
Councilman Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilman Dyak?
No, how long you been doing this? I mean, beyond being in Parker?
Couple of days. I mean, since 1985, I've been working on Mercedes.
We appreciate you servicing Parker residents, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
And Councilmember Hefta?
Although I drive a Ford, I have an appreciation for a high-quality car such as a Mercedes. And it looks like here that you're not going to have any vehicles stored outside or in the parking areas visible to the public.
That's the whole point, is have everything behind the fence as we do every night.
And so the security on these vehicles is rather high, then?
Oh, yeah.
Very high. So just wanted to state that for the record.
Thank you.
Great, all right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, and then we're going to up and up for public comment at 8:33. Anyone from the public wishing to make a comment on this use by special review? Nope. All right, we'll close it. Oh, come on down, Mr. Cunningham. Name and address again for the record?
It's Bruce Cunningham, 20881 Parliament Place. I presume you're moving from one location to another. Okay. Is there any, in approving this, is there any consideration, since it is an automotive repair shop, to possible contamination at the existing location before he vacates it and ends up either the next tenant or someone else have to pick up the tab for cleaning it up? I'm not trying to block what you're doing, but just trying to protect you and everybody else.
If, let's finish public comment, and then I'll invite you back down to address any other comments.
That's, that's it.
Thanks, Mr. Cunningham, appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to make public comment on this project? All right, with that, I'm going to close public comment at 8:35, and sir, do you want to come down and address the cleanup and the? It's always the guy in the middle, right? Always the guy, yeah.
To answer your question, what we do, I think compared to most other shops, is we use a product called, you know, everybody has spills, oils, everybody's concerned about that. We use a product called Pigmat. It's a substance we use to pick up coolant oil, and all that stuff gets picked up, reclaimed, and recycled with our oil filters. So that's, we don't clean and, you know, push stuff out the door, but, you know, I'm concerned about my environment as well, so I want to protect it as well. So we do steps that aren't really required to do, but we do it because we want to protect our environment.
Great, thanks, sir, appreciate that. All right, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing at 8:36, and bring it back to the council. I'll start to my middle left. Councilmember Barrington, any comments, any debate?
I mean, the character of this area, it's intended for just this type of facility. So I don't, I don't see any reason to, I mean, yeah, it's all light industrial, I don't see any reason to not move forward with this.
Councilmember Hefta?
It satisfies the use by special review criteria.
Right, Councilman Dyak?
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm just reviewing the nine criteria. The only thing, you know, it's a fairly mature piece of property that has changed hands a couple of times. So the landscaping, the buffering, and screening is good. We had comment on the pollution. I think, I think my questions, questions are answered.
Great, we'll start with Councilmember Pogue?
I don't have any further questions.
Councilman Rivero?
Thank you. Yeah, I think that the auto use triggers the use by special review, and thus, here you are. There, in my opinion, is not a better location for said auto use than where you're going. I believe it easily matches the nine criteria, and I can't, I can't think of a better location you should be in. I find it fascinating that you're appointment only, and you haven't even opened your doors yet, so, well done, you're doing something right. So, and congratulations. Growth is what we want to see in this community, and growth is what this council supports, especially for our businesses. I mean, mostly, I mean, for our businesses, we want to see you get more and more successful. We want to see you build your clientele, and you're doing that, and you're improving our community by taking a building that could use some love and making it a much safer place. So thank you very much for sticking with Parker, and we appreciate you here, and we hope you're here for the next, what was it, 35 years? Well done.
All right, Councilman Hendricks?
I concur with my fellow councilmembers.
Excellent, all right, with that, I will entertain a motion on this use by special review.
I move to approve, based on the six staff findings, subject to the following six conditions contained in the staff report. I said six way too many times, my apologies, council.
I'll second.
All right. Motion is made by Councilman Dyak, seconded by Councilmember Barrington. Rivero?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. All right, moving on to our ordinance. First ordinance up for tonight is ordinance number 9.213.1 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance to approve the amend and restated intergovernmental agreement between the town of Parker and Douglas County concerning joint animal sheltering. We've got deputy town attorney Jamie Nguyen.
Good evening, that's the mayor and councilmembers. I am here before you tonight to ask for approval of ordinance number 9.213.1, which is related to an intergovernmental agreement with Douglas County for the town of Parker's use of the Denver Dumb Friends League, mostly the Buddy Center facility. In 2014, the town of Parker first entered into an intergovernmental agreement under Douglas County's provisions with the Dumb Friends League that they had been exercising for quite some time. Prior to 2014, the town was spending approximately $21,000 per year on utilizing one-off sheltering services without a specific agreement in place. Since that time, the cost has gone down significantly. Currently, for this year, the budgeted amount was $8,900 for the entire year, and we are looking at an amount of $9,427 that will be due and owing for the year 2023. The amounts are calculated based on the total expenses that are charged to Douglas County by the Buddy Center. Douglas County figures out a per capita rate for the municipalities that are involved in their intergovernmental agreement, and the town of Parker pays 50% of those expenses that are allocated to us, with Douglas County contributing the other 50%. Since 2020 alone, through mid-August of this year, we have utilized the Denver Dumb Friends League facilities over 100 times for different animals. There are many uses that we impound animals for, such as found animals that we cannot locate their owner. We have impounded animals there because we have found their owners deceased. We have impounded animals based on owner's arrest. We have impounded animals for court holds based on animal cruelty cases and some dangerous animal cases, among other uses. We utilize the facilities somewhat regularly in the town, and we have had a very collaborative relationship with the Dumb Friends League when we have submitted animals to their care. They have worked with us for numerous court cases. They are very responsive when we need information from them, and we have worked hand-in-hand with them, as well as the county. The county has worked hand-in-hand with us to update this agreement. The agreement is not substantively changed from the one that has been in place for the last eight years. We have cleaned up a couple of provisions that were not in actuality being used, and we have specified how the charges are being submitted to the town of Parker. We are requesting town council approve this ordinance as we believe this is a benefit to the town, a significant cost savings to the town, and the relationship has been a very strong one in the last eight years. I'm happy to answer any questions regarding this agreement.
Great, we'll go to staff questions. Councilman Dyak, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
Councilman Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yes. Just curious, this agreement is with a Douglas County animal sheltering, but you mentioned Denver.
So the agreement is with Douglas County under their agreement with the Denver Dumb Friends League. We generally utilize the Buddy Center facility located in Castle Rock, but the Denver Dumb Friends League was concerned with having multiple agreements with all the municipalities that they are surrounded by, so they asked Douglas County to be the coordinating organization. So Douglas County contracts and does these intergovernmental agreements with the town of Parker, with Lone Tree, and with Castle Rock to utilize the Dumb Friends League facility, which is why we only pay a portion to the county for the services we utilize.
For the further explanation?
Absolutely.
Great, and Councilman Rivero?
Thank you. So prior to this, obviously, we've seen more use maybe, but prior to this, we were the sole entity that was paying an organization, correct? And now we're in partnership?
Correct.
Prior to 2014?
Correct. Prior to 2014, we were paying per use, I believe it was the South Platte Humane Society, and it was a significant cost because we were paying them as we needed it. With this collaborative effort, it's a significant cost savings.
And cost savings in transportation time for officers out of service. I mean, I think that the cost is, there's just dominos, we could go on for hours.
Correct, and generally, it's the community services officers that do the transportation to the Buddy Center.
Anything else? Great, all right, we're going to open up for public comment at 8:43. Anyone wishing to make a comment on this IGA? Anyone wishing to make a comment on this IGA? Seeing none in the room, we'll close it at 8:43. And council, I'll bring you back for your final comments. We'll start in reverse order. Councilman Rivero?
Thank you. Yes. This is prior to 2014, you had to go to Littleton to to pick up your animal. And I know those folks that go through the traumatic experience of losing their dog, they don't, they only have to drive down to Castle Rock if it goes that far. I know we keep them on site for a little while and post our social media. So I think this is a a great a great benefit to the citizens, and I appreciate Douglas County's partnership in in keeping it simple in our county. The partnership is is everything, and I appreciate Denver Dumb Friends League for everything they do and and working in partnership with Douglas County to serve our citizens.
So Councilmember Pogue?
Questions?
Councilmember Hendricks?
No comments.
Councilman Dyak?
No comment.
Councilmember Barrington?
No comments. Thank you.
And Councilmember Hefta?
Thank you, Jamie, for working so hard in your presentation and also letting us know about the significant cost savings and how when someone loses track of their dog or they're deceased, that we've got this partnership in place now to address this situation. Thank you.
Great, counsel. I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number 9 dot 213 dot one.
I move to approve ordinance number 9 dot 213 dot one on second reading.
I'll I'll second that.
Motion is made by Councilman Hendricks, seconded by Councilmember Pogue. Rivero?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Up for our last item of the night is ordinance number 1 dot 563 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance approving the purchase and sale agreement between the town of Parker and Confluence Companies concerning the sale of five My Main Street parcels owned by the town of Parker. So just for clarification, we're going to have a joint part joint presentation by the town, by par, and then by the Confluence Companies, all as one. And then after that, we'll come back for council questions of staff, and then we'll open it up for public comment, and we'll go until the public has commented on this, and then we'll bring it back to the town for final debate. So Woldy, you going to kick us off?
I am.
All right.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm just going to briefly kick us off to where we are right now in the process. The My Main Street parcels have been on the market through various iterations for many years. 2018, we had the large public outreach effort on these projects. And then the world kind of shut down for a couple of years. So starting at the end of last year is when we began having conversations with Confluence Companies. At the beginning of this year, the town and par entered into an exclusive negotiation agreement with Confluence. In April of this year, town council was presented with concept designs on the high-level vision on what Confluence wanted to partner with the town in developing in downtown Main Street. We have since then been working through the ENA, and we are at kind of step one of moving this process forward, which is the purchase and sale agreements. There's going to be many steps as we move through this process. It is not something that is going to happen overnight. So tonight is step number one, the purchase and sale agreements of the properties. Later this year, there will be another public meeting for the development agreement. The actual sale and transfer of properties will not occur until both the purchase and sale agreement and development agreements are approved by town council. We're anticipating that to be later this year per the agreements. Then, starting next year, will be the site plan process. That will be a very lengthy process, given the volume of properties and the development scope. And then, if all goes well, construction won't even start until 2024, probably. So I just wanted to point out that timeline. I know there's been some some confusion that that's where we're at and step one tonight. Thank you. Jim?
And we are happy to welcome back our former town attorney, Jim Maloney. Welcome back, sir.
Good evening, Mayor.
And it's like you never left.
Counsel.
Yeah.
So my my title is Assistant Town Attorney, Special Projects, and one of my special projects is to discuss the purchase and sale agreements. You're going to deal with one as a town council, and then when this meeting closes, you'll deal with the second one as the Urban Renewal Authority for the town, the Parker Authority for Reinvestment. So I get the pleasure of taking you through the details of the purchase and sale agreement. The two agreements are generally identical, just that one agreement deals with five parcels and the par agreement deals with one parcel. So I'm going to bore everybody here with some detail so everybody understands exactly what is contained within these documents and what is not contained in these documents. As Woldy indicated, this is the first step of many steps, and the next big step after this one, assuming you elect to move forward, is the development agreement. But I'll get into that detail here in a minute. So there are two components to the development of the My Main Street project that must be approved by the town council and by the Parker Authority for Reinvestment before Confluence Companies will own the My Main Street parcels and be authorized to proceed with the development of the My Main Street project. So the the first component is comprised of the purchase and sale agreements, which are the subject of tonight's meeting, and as I indicated, the par meeting to follow. The purchase and sale agreements between the town and Confluence Companies, which is on your agenda right now, is for the sale of five parcels of the My Main Street parcels to Confluence Companies. The sale price is $16,055,507. It's important to note that this is the appraised value of these parcels based upon a very recent appraisal. The purchase and sale agreement between par and Confluence Companies, again, which you will deal with later on this evening, is for the sale of one of the My Main Street parcels. The sales price is $1,390,000. And again, this is the appraised value of that parcel based upon a recent appraisal. It's important to note what is not included in these purchase and sale agreements. These agreements do not address the height and the density of the My Main Street project. Additionally, these agreements do not address the specific projects to be constructed on these parcels. These are purchase and sale agreements, the sale of property in exchange for for money. The specifics related to the My Main Street project to be constructed on these parcels, including height and density, will be addressed in the development agreement, which is the second component. As I indicated, there's two components. First is tonight, second component is the purchase is the development agreement. The development agreement must be approved by the town and par before Confluence Companies will own the My Main Street parcels and be authorized to proceed with the development of the My Main Street project. The development agreement does not exist at this point in time. If the purchase and sale agreements are approved tonight, then the town, par, and Confluence Companies will negotiate the terms and conditions of the development agreement. The terms and conditions will include the specifics related to the My Main Street project to be constructed on these parcels, including height and density. If the purchase and sale agreements are not approved by you tonight as the town council or by the Parker Authority for Reinvestment, then there's going to be no need to negotiate the development agreement. It is important to note that the title to these parcels will not transfer to Confluence Companies unless the town and par approve the development agreement. In this regard, the purchase and sale agreements for both the town and par provide, and this is directly out of the agreement, paragraph 6.4, if the town council and par do not approve the development agreement on or before December 7th, then this agreement shall terminate. Paragraph 9 point 1 point 3 states the town's obligation to close the sale of the property hereunder is subject to the satisfaction of the following conditions. One of these conditions states, Confluence Companies and the town shall have agreed to the development agreement and shall have obtained the approval of the development agreement by the par board and the town council. In the event the town council and par approve the development agreement, this agreement will control the development of the My Main Street parcels. If the terms and conditions of the development agreement are more restrictive than the town's zoning regulations, then the development agreement shall control, as against Confluence Companies, and any subsequent owners of these parcels. So this is one example where the terms and conditions of the development agreement would trump the zoning regulations if those terms and conditions are more restrictive than the zoning. In this regard, I would point you to paragraph 6.5 of the purchase and sale agreement, which states, "The development agreement shall be contractual and shall also constitute a private imposition and a grant to the town by Confluence Companies of covenants, conditions, restrictions, and equitable servitudes governing the development and use of the property that shall run with the land and shall be binding upon Confluence Companies in all grantees, successors, and assigns of Confluence Companies who take title to any portion of the property. The deed shall state that it is subject to the development agreement, and the development agreement shall be recorded upon the closing immediately after the deed." As I indicated, the purchase price of the town's parcel is $16,055,507, and the purchase price for the par parcel is $1,390,000. The purchase price for these parcels is subject to a public benefits credit, which is described in paragraph 6.3 of the agreement, which states, "The development agreement shall set out the public benefits that will be provided by the development of each parcel within the property. For the benefits provided by the development of each parcel, buyer, Confluence Companies, shall be entitled to a credit against the purchase price of that parcel in the amounts agreed and allocated in the development agreement." Although the purchase and sale agreement does not define the term public benefits credit, the concept of a credit allows for a reduction in the purchase price if the public-private partnership between the town, par, and Confluence Companies is not feasibly is not financially feasible without public investment. This term will be defined in the development agreement, which agreement must be approved by town council and par before ownership of these parcels will transfer to Confluence Companies. Par is currently using an independent consultant to review the estimated cost to develop the My Main Street project to determine if this public-private partnership is financially feasible without public investment. If the if the consultant determines that public investment is needed, the public benefits credit may be used as a public as a public investment tool to reduce the purchase price, but only to the extent provided in the development agreement. The purchase and sale agreements provide that November 7, 2022, is the deadline for the approval of the development agreement by Confluence Companies, par, and the town. If the development agreement is not approved by that deadline, the purchase and sale agreements that you're considering tonight will terminate. Please note that this deadline may be extended by the town manager for an additional 90 days. If the development agreement is approved by the town, par, and Confluence Companies and other conditions to close are satisfied, the purchase and sale agreements will close on December 14, 2022. Again, the town manager may extend this deadline for up to 90 days. The purchase and sale agreements also provide an outside closing date of November 1, 2023 to address any potential litigation, legal proceedings, or citizens initiative. If we get to closing, the town and par will convey their ownership in these parcels to Confluence Companies by deed. In the event that all the conditions to close are satisfied and par or the town decide not to close in breach of the purchase and sale agreements, Confluence Companies will have the right to obtain reimbursement of its actual out-of-pocket costs in connection with the with the negotiation of the purchase and sale agreements and the development agreement up to a maximum of $150,000. Again, this is only if all the conditions to closing are satisfied and par or the town council refuse to close. At that point, Confluence will get its out-of-pocket cost back because it's going to take a lot of time and effort to, one, to have negotiated this agreement, but to ultimately negotiate the development agreement. Following this transfer of ownership, Confluence Companies remain subject to the post-closing covenants contained in the purchase and sale agreements. These covenants will require Confluence Companies to obtain governmental approvals and commence construction by performance deadlines described in the development agreement. If these covenants are violated by Confluence Companies, the town and par will have the right to repurchase these parcels. This is a very long agreement. It's very detailed. I've tried to hit the the high points of the agreement. Any questions, mayor, council?
Do you, Jim, do you want to have Confluence come up before?
We can certainly deal with the questions.
Yeah, let's do that, and then we'll hold questions to the end for all staff questions.
Thank you and good evening, mayor and town council. My name is Tony DiSimone from Confluence Companies, 430 Indiana Street in Golden. And it's good to see you again. I know it's been a few months since since we've last met up, but for those, you know, here in the public that missed our last presentation, I just want you to know that we're local and unique in the in the development community. We're vertically integrated, and that means we're a developer, we're a builder, and we're a property manager. And that's important to know because we develop communities for the long term, and we do that because, or we're vertically integrated because it allows us to control the process and it allows us to control the quality. And so, you know, we have a track record of success. You'll see that on the screen in front of you in some of our vibrant mixed-use communities throughout the state of Colorado. But we talked about this last time, mixed-use projects are notoriously difficult to develop, and we found success only when you're allowed to or or you can create a partnership with the municipality and develop win-win solutions. And so we believe there's an opportunity here in downtown Parker to do that, and I'm excited and motivated because a lot of Parker residents that I know have reached out and are excited about the opportunities and possibilities here. So we have Dan Crane with Crane Architecture here tonight as well, and we have 30 more slides after this, but I know we've presented this before, so, you know, we've decided to cut that part out, and I'm here for questions. And I guess I'll turn it over to Jim or Woldy for the next step. Thank you.
Anything else to present on that? Okay, so let's go to staff and but Tony, stay up.
Okay.
You can have the hot seat.
We're all in the hot seat now, Tony.
So counsel, I will kick off with Councilman Dyak on questions.
Wow. Yeah, no, I, Jim, I think you did a pretty good job at explaining this, but just at a at a very, very high level, this purchase and sale sounds like a final a final edict, but it's not. It's actually the beginning. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, the real substance of this deal is going to be in the development agreement. As I tried to indicate in my presentation, this is the purchase and sale agreement, and the purpose is to sell land for money. Now, there's more to it, and there's references, as I indicated in the presentation, in the purchase and sale agreement that talk about the development agreement. But basically, the development agreement is required to close. If you don't approve the development agreement, these purchase and sale agreements terminate, and it's the end of the transaction.
Yeah, and you've, within the the memo, you've done a pretty good job at giving us the milestones and what needs to happen by the milestones, but there's a lot of information that is going to be needed to be digested by the council and also, you know, processed by by staff is, I mean, it's it's a pretty challenging and daunting task, I would I would assume. It just seems like there's a lot of unknowns at this point that we would need to get information posthaste. Is that a fair statement?
Well, we have provided you with information for quite some time. We have the purchase and sale agreement put together. We know generally the the concept for the development of these six parcels, so it's really now getting to a fine point of putting the details down on paper, and that's the development agreement. Of course, we will consult with council on some of the deal points before we get to the November 7 meeting, where you will hopefully consider the development agreement. And again, as I indicated, the town managers have the authority to push that out for an additional period of time if needed.
And you mentioned public benefits. And you mentioned public benefits credit. You said that's largely undefined. That will be defined in the development agreement and spelled out.
That's correct. I mean, I'll at least provide you with the concept behind the credit and how it's going to work. The development agreement will specify, in large part based upon the analysis that's being done by the consultant hired by Par, to determine if a public investment is necessary. And as a part of that analysis, if a public investment is necessary, the analysis will identify the amount of the investment and then also the period of time which the investment will have to be paid out.
Yeah, so, again, I'm going to go back, and I'll try to reemphasize that the purpose of this item is to consider the sale of five parcels of property to Confluence, from town to Confluence, for phase development of My Main Street project. Again, it's not height, it's not density, it's not what's going to be put there, it's just, should we approve this to continue the conversation? Would that be a fair statement?
That's correct. Again, the purchase and sale agreement is going to be subject to a development agreement that is to be negotiated.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington.
So, just again, to clarify, nothing can happen moving forward until this first step happens. This, go ahead.
Correct. If you don't approve the purchase and sale agreement, we're done.
So, just in maybe, because this is so much more of a complex transaction than a residential transaction, just like you would go under contract for a property before the potential buyer is going to do any inspections, like a furnace, you know, just a home inspection. They're not going to, they're not going to, they're not going to go out and spend a bunch of money to do inspections unless they know that they're under contract first.
Correct.
So?
Because it is going to take quite an investment by Confluence as well as town staff to negotiate the development agreement, and I think this is a good faith indicator that you really want to do this project if you decide to move forward by approving the purchase and sale agreements tonight.
So, the due diligence process for, on both sides, there's still a lot of work to be done.
Correct.
Thank you. No questions.
Councilmember Hefte, any questions?
If I may address Woldy as well?
Absent. You can have your choice, any of the three.
So, Woldy, just, I will have a few questions. Just a brief history, how long have the five town-owned parcels of property been on the market?
I've worked for the town for ten years, and the majority of the time, some of these parcels weren't owned yet, were being looked at for development. As an example, Pine Curve was purchased over twenty years ago, and there's been various iterations on that property. East Main, when that was purchased in 2013, that also had the intention of the remnant parcel from the park and the library to be on the market. That really started in earnest with the rest of these properties in 2018. We did, previous to 2018, try some RFPs, things like that, and just could not get traction on these. But personally, I've worked on them probably most of the time since 2016.
Okay. And has any other developer come forward to the town and Par the way Confluence has with all the properties in mind to try to knit together a concept of development of these properties for the town?
Not to this level of diligence in getting to purchase and sale agreements. We've had ancillary interests, but never anything that advanced to the development and negotiations of purchase and sale agreements for all of them.
And then, just briefly for Mr. Maloney, thank you, Woldy. Wouldn't it fair to say it's at least a five-step process? Because you would have the purchase and sale, the development agreement, the site plan process, the construction, but you also have the post-closing covenants as well that will would hold the developer accountable for laws and regulations and ordinances and et cetera, et cetera, correct?
Absolutely. I mean, there's multiple steps involved, and the real work, assuming we get to the development agreement and it's approved, is going to be the ultimate development of these properties. Site plans, Platts, a lot of engineering, a lot of architecture. It's very, very involved.
And just, could you briefly explain the concept of a public-private partnership for this type of property, these properties?
I don't know if you want to.
So, the goal has been since, especially since the My Main Street process in 2018, was to really find a partner that we could work with, not just sell the properties and be done, but really find a partnership. So, we, Confluence has stepped into that role. But really, the way that's going to work is it's all parties working together to develop a successful project in downtown. Sometimes that is negotiating what the buildings and structures themselves are going to look like, but more importantly, it is making sure that we are not setting the town or Confluence up for a project that isn't financially feasible and going to benefit the town. And so, that is where public investment may need to come in. Par, that is its role in the community. And so, it really takes it from a traditional development of you buy the property, you develop the property, you have to follow town codes, to all sides working together to make sure it's a financially feasible project, and the development agreement will lay all that out and make sure all sides are equally part of this project going forward.
Thank you, Paul.
Councilmember Hendricks.
My fellow councilmembers, I've asked the questions I would ask. It seems like there's a lot of protection for the town and Confluence, and so recognizing this as a step one, I'm good.
Councilmember Pogue.
Okay, gap analysis. We have talked about that a number of times, and that's going to be what they pay us for the property against what they want back for their investment. Is that correct?
That is a simplified version. It is a very complex, looking at all the costs all in, and what it takes to build this project to make it financially feasible. So, there's, it's very complex.
Don't evade the question, please, because we have talked about that full amount of the appraised value being used as quote-unquote "a down payment version." Is that correct?
Jim?
Yeah, at this point, I don't think Woldy can answer those questions because you're getting into topics that have been the subject of negotiations in executive session in terms of the detail associated with the gap analysis.
But at this point, you're asking us to vote on this contract?
We don't know at this point the level of public investment that will be necessary. As I indicated during the presentation, Par has retained an independent consultant, which is going through the process of determining if a public investment is necessary. If that happens, we will have discussions with you in executive session, and then ultimately, when we get to the development agreement, the consultant will appear at that public meeting and will discuss the gap analysis and how they reach their conclusion. So, that document will ultimately become a public document, but right now, we are still in the negotiation stage.
Okay, so we have no firm development concept at this time, except the zoning that rides with this land at this time is a height value of sixty feet. Is that correct?
Well, there's two zonings that are associated with this project. One is the East Main, for the East Main parcel. The rest is the greater downtown zoning. Again, we have not gotten to height or density. That's all going to be subject of the negotiation.
But the zoning that already rides with the land, like on Pace or with Pine Curve, is sixty feet. Is that correct?
I believe it's sixty feet, or it's either four or five stories, whichever is the lesser of the two.
Okay, so then, in our past practice, the zoning that is current on the land at the time of purchase and sale rides with the land. You're telling us that you can override that with this contract with the development agreement. Is that correct?
What I'm saying is that the terms and conditions of the development agreement could be more restrictive than the zoning. It can expand the zoning, but it can certainly be more restrictive.
Nor can we, at this point in time, know where that's going. We know that there's sixty feet in front of Pace and sixty feet on Pine Curve, yet we don't know, we're going to enter into this agreement unknowing. Is that correct at this point?
Well, again, this is a purchase and sale agreement, as I indicated. That detail will come in the development agreement, and if Town Council and Par do not want to approve that agreement because they don't like the terms and conditions associated with height and density, you don't have to approve it, and we're done. It terminates these agreements.
But keep in mind that generally, you have all of that, the zoning that rides with the land, you do it right at the time you sell the land and put it into the purchase and sale agreement, and we're not doing that. Is that correct?
This purchase and sale agreement is not about changing the zoning. The development agreement may be approved by you, and there may be no need to change the zoning. We just don't know until we get into that detail. That's why this is a two-step concept.
And I don't think it's fair to the public not to fully disclose everything at this point in time. You're asking the public to support your commitment or our commitment to a sale contract that we don't know what we're getting for our money yet.
You will know when you get to the development agreement stage.
I think that, this should also all be happening at one time if we're going to do it. The other thing I'm very concerned is we have had prior developers come to us, and they were offering two- or three-story developments on these key parcels, yet we turned them down. We didn't like the fact that they did not have enough value for Pace in these agreements. We turned them down, and now we're opening it up. We don't even know what we're doing. Is that correct? We have no idea what's coming for the money we're putting out.
We have a concept plan, and the decision not to move forward on prior discussions, negotiations, and contracts, those were Town Council decisions, not staff's decisions.
Well, I think we are looking at this, you know, in the wrong way. If we're going to do this, we need a development concept before we sell the land, should ride together. And I'm going to bring up something else to you. I do believe, if we look at the front of our building, it says, "Government by the people for the people." How many times has the community come forward and said, "No, no, and no" to these height issues that may be assumed because the zoning rides with the land? It's been, what, three times, four times that the community has come forward and said, "No." Yet we keep coming forward, and now we've got this all convoluted process that we're going to say, "Well, let's do it this way, and then maybe we'll do it this way." That's the wrong way. If you want something like that, let's put it to the ballot and let the people vote what they want to do with their land, not our land.
Any other questions, Joe?
I don't think I have anything else, except unexplained, section nine point one point four, with resident-initiated petition restrictions here.
Well, that is the section that deals with the outside closing date, and if there is a citizens' initiative that's filed, the closing would be postponed from the December date into a date going into 2023 to allow that to go through the process.
But you have a restriction in here against citizen petitions. Can you explain why that's there?
Nine point what?
Nine point one point four.
So, there's no restriction on a citizens' initiative. What it's saying is if there's a citizens' initiative pending on the closing date, then the closing won't happen. So, what it says is there shall not be pending as of the closing date any resident-initiated petition, litigation, or other proceeding seeking to prevent the sale of the property under this agreement, but no event beyond the outside closing date. So, if there is a citizens' initiative, there's a lawsuit, or some other legal proceeding in place on the date of the closing, the closing's not going to occur. That closing will be continued to allow for that litigation or that initiative to proceed, and that's why we have the outside closing date in 2023. It's not preventing a citizens' initiative. This contract cannot amend the town charter.
Well, thank you for explaining that clause. It's rather convoluted in its concept.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember Pogue. Councilman Deveraux?
Thank you. I appreciate the comments today. I appreciate being reminded that this is only the first step. I understand, and as I have understood for four years, that Councilwoman Pogue has some issues with some of the buildings that would be on these parcels, again, to be addressed in the development agreement, and this is simply to get the ball rolling. So, I'm going to roll it back and lighten the mood a little bit.
So, do you have a question for the staff?
I do. I want, I would like, Tony, I know you cut yourself short as far as your slideshow. Can you please tell the citizens about yourself, about your company, about why you're here tonight? What makes you different from CBRE, et cetera, et cetera? Why are you here versus a national chain?
Yeah, you know, I think one of the big things you'll find that's different with us is, you know, we look at every site uniquely and try to find the right uses that will work well in the community. And so, we spent a lot of time with the My Main Street program over the last ten years of surveys and community input, and tried to create a variety of uses that satisfies, you know, that public comment that has come out of that. You know, I mentioned mixed-use communities are very difficult to develop. This is one reason why. It takes a long time. They're very complicated. You know, oftentimes, it does take some type of incentive to make components of it work because by themselves, those components would not be created, would not be profitable. It's difficult to bring new restaurants, to bring office space, things like that, that by themselves are very difficult to create. So, you do, in our case, what we propose in a vertical mixed-use setting, which brings added construction costs when you do that, but that's what creates the vibrancy. You know, one of the things that struck me tonight, just coming here, when I drove down Main Street, is I saw one person walking on Main Street, and that's it. And that shouldn't be like that in your downtown. And if you compare that to what's happened and what we've helped create in downtown Castle Rock, where you have a lot more vibrancy, that's a community where we invested one hundred and fifty million dollars, and because of that, sixty-two new businesses relocated to downtown Castle Rock, eight new restaurants opened up. So, that's the kind of vibrancy and investment that you'd like to see in a community, and I believe we can create here as well. I just, I would like to touch on the height comment because I know it's sensitive. It is our intention to keep the buildings below sixty feet, so, and follow that. So, most of the sites that we're proposing are shorter, two- and three-story buildings, except for two of those sites. We did have the concept program in here, but again, for awareness of time, we left it out, but, so. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anything else, Josh? All right. Thank you. Anything else from staff? Tony? All right, we're going to open up for a public comment at nine twenty-three. So, you should have been handed a card that you could put your name and address, just to drop it off at the town attorney's desk right there. But anyone wishing to make public comment, now is your time. Come on down, stick your name and address for the record, and we'll just keep coming.
Good evening. This is going to... My name is Susan Bertocci, B-E-R-T-O-C-C-H-I, and I live at 11614 Tyrolite Trail, and that's within walking distance to downtown Parker. Good evening, Town of Parker, Mayor, Town Council. Our family is celebrating fifteen years living in Parker this coming Friday. We are raising three children here. My husband is your local trauma surgeon. We moved here from New York City to expand our family and slow down a bit, and that did not happen. Due to... Due to Parker's growth, Dr. Bertocci is busier than ever, and this town has been very good to us. And we are not alone, I know that. We wanted to give back. Two and a half years ago, we invested a large sum of money to open up a little ice cream and chocolate shop just off Main Street called Kilwin's. We opened just prior to the COVID shutdown, and I should take this opportunity to thank you and this town for the tremendous customer support we received during that awful time. Thankfully, this town loves and supports its small businesses, and we are grateful. As a downtown business owner, I'm here to support the expansion of Main Street. I've been following this for many years. Those parcels of land have been vacant for far too long. As a resident of the Town of Parker, I want to see a thriving downtown, one that takes more than 10 minutes to walk through. More restaurants and locally-owned retail, offices, and residents above to support those businesses. As a member of the Downtown Business Alliance, I was invited by Mr. DeSimone and his Confluence Company to tour downtown Castle Rock, which they have recently developed. And while I am not in favor of tall, tall buildings, I feel this developer, this is a developer who will listen to our feedback, follow local ordinances with regard to height, safety, and design, and create beautiful gathering spaces for our families, friends, visitors, and growing senior population. I've seen primary renderings, and I'm very excited. There are many locals who want to fulfill their dreams of opening a small business on Main Street, just like my family. Parker is growing, and this Main Street expansion is inevitable. I would like to thank our elected town council and town administrator and ask that they approve the sale of these parcels to Confluence. I want to thank you for your love and dedication to this beautiful town. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. All right, who's up next?
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Omar Castillo, 12509 Prince Creek Drive, Parker, Colorado, 80134. Feels a little bit different being up here, not addressing you on DBA business, actually speaking for myself for once, so, miss being up here with you guys. Just wanted to really quickly give you my personal opinion and support on the buy-and-sell agreement with the town and Confluence Companies. These five parcels have set empty long enough. We've talked about how long they've been available. We've talked about other developers trying to come in and do something, only to not ever see anything come to fruition. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to support this, the buy-and-sell agreement. I, as well as Susan and some of the other DBA members that are here to support this, also had a chance to spend some time with Tony at the properties down in Castle Rock. If you guys haven't had a chance, for the folks that are out in the crowd, haven't a chance to spend some time down there, I highly suggest you guys go down there. I never leave my Parker bubble. For those of you that know me, I don't leave Parker. My wife works here, she teaches here, my kids go to school here, we're here, we've been here 20 years. We need to see these parcels get developed. We need to see it get done. I feel, in my opinion, if we don't get it done, with a partner like Weldy said, with Confluence, I don't foresee this getting done in my timeframe, and I want to see these get done. The other thing I think I will say is, in my opportunity that I did spend down there with Tony and some of the DBA folks, what they've done down there is phenomenal. They've done great condos, they've done great restaurants, they've done great businesses. I even got a chance to talk to some of the business owners in one of the second floor. There's a mortgage guy in there, there's a real estate guy, and I believe there's a trust attorney guy, and then I think there's another guy in there. But my conversation with those four folks was, they never have to get out and pound the pavement. They never have to get out of their buildings to go talk to people. They, between the four of them, network, and they do everything together within that whole building, so they don't have to spend any money on advertising, they don't have to spend any money doing this, doing that, or whatever. So I found that to be pretty amazing for someone that does have to be out in the community talking to people. If I had four other guys that I could sit there and work with all day and just pass business back and forth, I'd be a happy kid all day. Now, and once again, I just want to say, quick story. My sister lives, my sister-in-law lives at Trailfoots, the Trails of Crowfoot. She comes to Parker for three reasons, three reasons only. Drop her kid off at school, go to Stro Ranch, King Supers, and then go to the rec center for sports. Other than that, she's down in Castle Rock two to three times a week for dining and entertainment, and just to get outside of Parker for something different. Brett and Jen are back there, and I know they would love to see other beautiful faces other than this a couple of times a week. So what this does is this brings a lot of great opportunities for downtown Parker, for our citizens, and for also the people coming to the, to the area. So as a citizen of Parker for 20-plus years, I ask you guys to see this through the end and give Tony an opportunity to show us what he can do. And as Weldy said, and as Tony said, we're looking for a partner. I think we've found a partner in Confluence and Tony's company. So with that, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Omar. All right, come on in.
Mr. Mayor, Town Council members, thank you for the opportunity to come and support this ordinance. My name is Diane Roeth, and I'm a 30-year resident of Parker, so I have seen tremendous change here. And I reside at 8996 Matsumbaka Road in Parker. I also chair the town's Cultural and Scientific Commission, and that's the reason I'm here. I see a great opportunity for enhanced vibrancy in the downtown area, and of course, I am going to speak very highly of what I believe are two crown jewels in downtown Parker, and that is the Pace Center and the Schoolhouse. The vacant land that is near these entities really doesn't help the town, doesn't help Parker Arts, it doesn't help the Pace Center, the Schoolhouse, or the citizens. And so this first step, taking this first step to look at how increased vibrancy in the downtown area, how some additional development can enhance the downtown as well as these crown jewels. The, there are other members of the, there's another member of the Cultural Commission here tonight. I want to just add that several members were not able to come due to medical emergencies, family, kids, activities, that kind of thing on a Tuesday night. But I want to assure you that as a town appointed, as your citizen advisory board, that you have appointed us to be the advisory council to Parker Arts, we will be following this very closely, be very interested, and hope to participate if this process goes forward.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
All right.
My name is Brandy Wilks, and I am at 22104 East Idlewild Drive, Parker, Colorado, 80138. So I just want to address, I know everybody up there knows, but for the people who don't know, my family just celebrated 51 years here in Parker, and I am celebrating my 40th year here in Parker. So when it comes to what really matters for our town, trust me, I love this town more than anything else, and I will protect it. With that being said, I fully support the sale of these five parcels. If it's not to Confluence, it's going to be to somebody because growth is inevitable, and growth is a wonderful thing for our downtown. It's vital to have a walkability with our downtown area. The idea of these parcels to create a park once and spend the day downtown is the atmosphere that we're looking for. The Confluence Company has done a wonderful job of that down in Castle Rock. And if you go and interview some of the companies and the businesses in downtown Castle Rock that were there before Confluence came in, you'll see that they fully love and fully support everything that Confluence has done. I also know that we've got residents who are concerned, and I hear you on that. We've got lots of residents that back up to those lands. After meeting Confluence myself, I can tell you, they will listen to what you have to say. They will work to make sure that it's a win for everybody. They want to make sure that their reputation is always good and that they take care of the town. That's what they do. They want to take care of the town. That's their whole purpose on everything that they do. I believe that there are things that they have developed in other cities that work great in other cities, and I believe that we can come to a win-win or a mutual agreement on what works best for our hometown. So with that in mind, please consider the sale agreement today to those five parcels of land.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Council members. My name is Robert Cox. I live at 20818 Parliament Court, Raleigh Downs subdivision, Parker. So I'm about half a mile right over here. I've lived here for 30 years. 25 years ago, I was chairperson of the Town Planning Commission. We had many meetings in a Quonset hut down here on East Main Street that took us, burned the midnight oil developing a master plan. Well, that didn't last long. Master plans have come and gone, mirrors have come and gone, town council members have come and gone. Same thing has happened with this development plan for East Main Street. My primary concern is Pine Curve. Oh, it seems like it's been at least a decade that met with community development, ate a lot of their cookies, tried to come up with decisions about what to do with that parcel. A lot of what I see what's influenced Confluence development is the ideas that were presented if we were to develop this. What was the public input? What would you like to see if it were to be developed? Not it will be developed, but if it might be. And I see a lot of that if possibilities reflected here tonight. I'm concerned, just like some members of the Town Council, about entering into a purchase and sale agreement on a development idea that may or may not come to fruition. And I would just, I would ask you to proceed with caution. This is the town's property, and you're responsible for it. And so caution is my main word. My second word is I'm concerned about the other impact factors. 300 houses, 400 development units, two cars per unit, that's another 800 cars trying to go up and down Main Street. I'd like to see how that will be addressed with the development plan at the same time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Victoria Hawkins, 20120 Edinburgh Court, also Raleigh Downs walking distance. I know progress is important to growth, to the Town of Parker for its viability, but I do share the concern. Earlier, you kept on talking about the nine criteria, and I'm just concerned that some of these, with such a huge, huge project, are not going to be able to be met. You're talking about harmony compatibility, you're talking about overuse. Main Street, if you try to go anywhere at 8 o'clock in the morning, from Parker Road it bags up to Victoria Drive East, if not even further. Currently, we have six traffic lights in the span of three-quarters of a mile, and you're talking about adding all these units, these businesses. Like I said, I understand growth is important, and we've been here 20 years, but how is this small Main Street in its current state going to support another 400 units of living businesses parking without really being a danger? And, and, and we don't even want to go into downtown anymore because it is so congested in the afternoons, in the evenings, when you want to go and sit down to eat somewhere. Cars keep going by, and the problem is going to multiply. The cars need to be somewhere, and not everybody is willing to park at the Pace Center to walk or even further out. And with the additional buildings, some of the older parking is not going to be there anymore, it's going to be restructured. So I echo the concern and to use caution and keep that in mind with the density, with the height of the buildings. We've all come here because we love this town, we love the small-town feel, we love the knowing people, the safety. And with all this influx, at a certain point, that's not going to be there anymore. We're going to turn into another town that people are afraid to go outside by themselves. We already see some of that, and I think it would be a shame to perpetuate that even more. Just caution, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Kathleen Zefory, and I am a commercial building owner in downtown Parker, and that address is 19755 East Pike's Peak Avenue. And I am, of course, all in favor of progressive, thoughtful development in Parker. However, I'm also concerned about property values of current owners of buildings that are small and intimate, that, you know, this is lovely, but this looks like, you know, downtown veil to me. And Parker has a certain characteristic that I worry about losing as we go to a more industrial look. So I would ask you guys, as we proceed forward, I've heard the cautionary moments, and I remember the Quonset hut. I've been in Parker for 45 years, and, you know, we got to grow, and that's going to happen. So one of the things I would ask you to do, there are so many rumors flying around this stuff, that, that as Town Council, please, have a lot of clarity and a lot of transparency about what's happening, that tonight, for example, is not about actually purchasing this properties, you know, the properties, selling the properties. It's not, it's not about, you know, purveying these properties tonight. We are going to have a lot of conversation about development, you know, over the next several weeks and months as we go forward. And, you know, to, to the point of having it go to the population, maybe, yeah, some of it, if we're going to talk about changing any kind of code for height and to go to, you know, a fairly industrial look in our Victorian town. I worry as well about the west side of town, the west side of, from Parker Road West, seems to feel like another world. And a lot of the development has not happened over there, except in large, you know, apartment complexes. And I would love to see you guys consider how you, you know, how you bring that together so that we're not losing the west side of Parker to a different identity altogether. And, yeah, and just, my third point was around the complementary, that we do look at a Victorian, that Parker has built around a Victorian concept. This is not Victorian. And to, to maintain some of that look, and I know that's not what we're here to discuss tonight, so, you know, clarity and transparency, please, so that Nextdoor is not blowing up with every possible rumor known to mankind. You know, let's stay focused and move forward.
Great. Thank you. I share your sentiments on Nextdoor, absolutely.
I'm Phil Kramer, and I live at 11656 Pine Canyon Drive in the Idlewild subdivision. And I serve on the, on the Parker Cultural and Scientific Commission, which, you know, has a lot to do with the events that go on here in town. And, you know, my, my goal is to bring, to make Parker more of a family-oriented, but also arts-oriented kind of town. You know, when I look at towns that I've been to all over Colorado, I think of Aspen. Now, yes, there are some very bad sides to Aspen. We don't want to have $15 million shacks here. But if you look at downtown Aspen, it's lovely. It's largely Victorian, it's not totally, but it's largely Victorian. A lot of the building heights are two stories. A lot of people live over those stores. It's, to me, you know, I mean, you've even got streams meandering down next to the benches. That's, to me, the kind of look we should be trying to go for here because it gives you the ability to bring in artists, it gives you the ability to have art galleries. We have one art gallery in Parker, which I find rather sad. I used to own an art gallery up in Beaver Creek, and I certainly, I'm not saying I would want to do that here, but, you know, it's, it's, you know, we have what could potentially be a really culturally and... They haven't been able to sell me on it. I think it's too tall for, for Parker. But I like the quality of what they've done and the design of what they've done, and I think it could be modified in some respects to make it, you know, more Parker-esque. And I think that would be great. So just give it some thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. My name is Denise Hack. I reside at 9181 Scenic Pine Drive, Parker, Colorado 80134. And I own Parker Law Group on Main Street. The address of my law practice is 19590 East Main Street, and that is within the town boundaries.
Denise, hang on just one second. I'm having... Uh-oh. Nope. I know, I know. You're not charging me, are you, Denise?
Nope.
All right, John, you got three?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
Many of you either know me or know of me or know me personally. Some of you have even had the pleasure of listening to my small government lectures and semi-regular reminders that taxation is theft. This is your reminder again today, guys. Driving through Colorado, I am dismayed to see the seemingly uncontrolled growth taking over our ranch lands. My husband and I often snidely remark, "Oh, look, a spare piece of dirt. We better build something on it." My husband grew up in Littleton and brought me here as a mail-order bride from a third-world country, California. In all seriousness, I do not recognize my former state, and I am sickened to see Colorado following in its footsteps. I am not a fan of either uncontrolled government or nor uncontrolled and unwise growth. Yet I am also not in favor of zero government or zero growth. And any good farmer will tell you that growth is necessary to avoid dying on the vine. The town and county have robust zoning ordinances to ensure that our town is thoughtfully laid out, and land is not wasted, and property values are protected. Conversely, as an advocate of small government, I do not believe it is the town's job to act as real estate developers, but that the town should steward, should be a steward of town resources. Leaving three town par, sorry, leaving six town parcels vacant under the ownership of the town is neither small government nor good stewardship of the resources. The area between Parker Station and the Arts District feel disjointed and are useless to businesses and residents alike, not to mention it is quite an eyesore. If council votes to sell the town's parcels to Confluence, the council will be able to act as stewards to responsibly and thoughtfully oversee the development of these parcels while allowing private commerce to develop the lots at its expense, at the expense of the developer, with minimal contribution from the town and taxpayers. The development is expected to make Parker more walkable and help the town create a park once and walk the rest of the day environment. The town would be in a position to work with Confluence to ensure that we keep the character of our town in the development. These parcels will eventually be developed. Parker is growing in both population and as a destination for family activities. Either this council acts to ensure that the development of these parcels are thoughtfully laid out, protects property values, and does not waste public, public resources, or the council votes to allow some future council to have a say in what our downtown looks like while sending revenue to nearby communities that will thoughtfully develop their business districts. Thank you for your time and consideration, and I urge you to adopt the resolution to sell to Confluence.
Great. Thanks, Denise.
Hi. Good evening. I'm Kathy Gleuston. I've lived in 10571 East Whispering Pines Drive, or maybe it's Whispering Pines Drive. When I bought the house, there was no east, so I don't know where I live anymore. But it's Parker 80138.
We're going to, we're going to set our phones. Our thing is going crazy. I don't know if my batteries are dead, but go... My first time. Go ahead. We'll give you your three minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. I also was here when there was a plan to make Main Street a pedestrian walkway, and that was when the Quonset Hut was there thirty-three years ago. And, you know, I think one of the reasons why you only saw one person walking down Main Street, because I do walk a lot down Main Street with my friend, is because of the traffic. We talked a lot tonight about traffic and where things are going. Is there this and that? But what about here? I mean, what is the traffic going to look like? There are gates now and a rail where the Quonset Hut was. Why? Because people were killed crossing that road. You know, it's, it's really kind of dangerous to walk downtown Parker. And I would love to walk downtown Parker. So I hope that you will consider the safety of our citizens when you do whatever kind of, you know, you need to do. Because it's a nice town. I love living here, but I like walking better than anything else, and it's real hard to walk downtown Parker.
Great. Thank you. All right. Who's up next? Mr. Schnell.
Hello. Good evening. So I'm Christopher Schnell. I live at 15654 East Pine Drop Avenue here in Parker, Colorado 80134. I'm here in support of the purchasing of these properties or this first step. I come from a town that was an old mill town in Oregon in the eighties when the mills were all closing. And I know what a dilapidated rundown downtown looks like, and not that we're anything near that. But I do believe in what Wayne Gretzky says is the secret to success, which is you got to skate to where the puck's gonna be. Right? And if we look at our competition, and it is a competition for dollars. Okay, we've got Castle Rock that is looking great. We've got Lone Tree that has slated to develop a fake downtown, which we could easily beat, right? But there's going to be some cool places there. We've got vacant lots in our downtown business district. This is not good. So I'm all in favor of us approving this, of course, with thoughtful consideration of all of the questions raised today as we move on to the next step. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Chris.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Town Council. My name is Cameron Kemplin, and I live at 11791 Bent Oaks Street here in Parker, 80138. This is a statement from the Downtown Business Alliance of Parker in support of the development of the five town-owned parcels. This letter is to express the support from the DBA for the proposed purchase and sell agreement to Confluence Companies for the development of the five town parcels, town-owned parcels located in downtown Parker. We are confident that the applicant's proposed increase in density is a necess, is a necessary component of downtown Parker's continued success. The DBA is very pleased that the buy and sell agreement will increase in the number of residents within walking distance of downtown shops and businesses, means a larger customer base, as well as the increased number of new homeowners moving to Parker area. Based on the quality of the applicant's prior projects in Castle Rock and Golden, these new residents will likely bring with them healthy disposable income to spend in downtown Parker. We are also looking forward to welcoming new businesses and new investments to the sites, which has been underutilized for years. The DBA is very appreciative of the time and effort that the applicants put into engaging the DBA, the DBA and the Parker community. In June, the Parker Downtown Business Alliance asked Downtown Colorado Inc., or DCI, to engage local downtown business stakeholders and understand challenges facing the local business and property owners. As a part of this visioning exercises, the DBA and DCI implemented a survey and workshop activities to better understand these challenges. The result of this visioning workshop found that the DBA membership and stakeholders gravitated around some very clear goals and perspectives of downtown Parker. Our members want is, is increased foot traffic, retaining visitors, enhancing amenities that we already have, increasing the available workforce, making downtown a multi-use destination where citizens work, live, and play. And the Confluence concepts are aligned to achieve every single one of these goals for downtown Parker. More shoppers, more locals frequenting the district, more events, and higher profile among the communities around the region. One question in the DBA workshop survey that received the most unified response in the entire survey was, on a scale of one to nine, how important is the image of downtown Parker to you? The resulting average score was eight point seven eight out of nine, meaning highly important and a unified desire to build strong, a strong image of downtown Parker. The importance with projecting a strong regional image further demonstrates that downtown Parker is moving from the growing stages to a mature stage of downtown formation. Last week, we surveyed our DBA membership with an overwhelming response of seventy-two percent responding to our survey, with a hundred percent of responses supporting the development of the five parcels.
Hey, Cameron, if you can wrap up.
Mm-hmm. In conclusion, we urge you to vote yes on the project because it is the kind of development that is good for downtown Parker, the residents of Parker, and good for the Parker economy. Once again, thank you for your time here and our support for the development. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Tony, coming down.
How's everyone doing? I'm just going to read a quick note. I'll try to be quick.
Name and address for the record. Come on, this is your first time.
Tony Mango, 8632 Thunderbird Road, Parker, Colorado. I represent the ownership groups of the Twenty Mile Buildings, which I think everybody knows, and Parker Main Street Exchange, which there's going to be some cool stuff coming out later. But I just want to give you just a couple notes, kind of what's going on over there that might help you guys in your decision. We've been a hundred percent full since 2014. We turn businesses away pretty much weekly. We probably get a restaurant inquiry at least once a quarter from restaurant groups that want to come to Parker. A lot of those requests are asking to be on Main Street, not just in a, you know, outer Parker. We've seen some, some of these restaurants go to competing areas. So there, there's just no inventory, commercial inventory downtown. The vacancy rates are near zero. I believe Parker's two to three percent overall as a whole town. So just keep that in mind as we develop this, that there's just a need for this. What's really restricting downtown is how much commercial space is available. There's, there's just not enough. You know, one thing downtown, we've heard it before, with, with the town being the stakeholder, I think Denise had the comment, is, is the town is not in the business, or should not be in the business of being a landowner. And unfortunately, it probably has been. I think those lots have been acquired before everybody in this room over the years. You know, and here we are today again, looking to do something with these lots. So again, just take that consideration that there's really no place to grow unless you guys do something with these five lots. So I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and council members. My name is Christine King. I live at 11149 Dartmoor, D-A-R-T-M-O-O-R Court in Raleigh Downs, 80138. I've been a resident of Parker, Colorado for, hard to believe, about fifty years. So I knew Main Street when it was dirt, and the, the Parker Garage was on where Warhorse used to be, and the Quonset Hut, all of that. To me, Parker's always been a town of horse property. It was billed as a Victorian town. The Pay Center really didn't look Victorian. The Parker Library doesn't look very Victorian. I do think that they added a lot to the community, however, even though there's no Victorian motif. I'm concerned about the traffic on Main Street. I do think having a company that wants to incorporate all the properties is possibly a good idea, but I would like to see the soul of Parker maintained. These buildings that are tall and huge really, to me, don't conform with Parker. I'd like to see the buildings kept maybe two story, stories max. So I just, I just want you to know I love Parker. I would like to see the development with these entities to be extra thoughtful because they're really like the, as Mr. Mango said, there's not that much commercial property available. And so what is available should be developed very thoughtfully with the Parker residents in mind. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Town Council and Mayor. My name is Cheryl Hardy. I live at 10935 Parker Vista Place. Kind of surprised I'm the only one from Parker Vista so far here this evening. But as you know, we live in the area that backs right up to the Pine Curve. In the twenty-six years that I've lived here, I've raised three boys, and we have, from either scouting issues or school issues, they've attended a lot of these meetings with me over the years. We've sat through some of the design meetings that have been in some of these rooms and talked about what some of the needs that the whole community sees. At this point, even where I live, I'm tired of seeing the properties vacant. I mean, we all know that there's lots of possibilities, and there have been lots of possibilities over the years. So when this little sheet asks, you know, are you for or against? I'm middle of the road. I'm not going to decide, kind of like Cheryl posed, she even said that we may have to wait and see what the design plans are. So I'm really up here mostly talking about how when you make the design plans, really gives consideration that we're not Castle Rock. We're not Aspen. We're not Vale. We are uniquely Parker. So whatever we can do to stay uniquely Parker would be fabulous. And like everybody else, concerned with traffic, our traffic, parking, safety, especially along the trails, because when my kids and I have walked down, we usually avoid the streets and hit the trail. But that trail needs to stay secure and safe. The noise and the light situation worries obviously me because I know over the last year or two, with even the tailgate getting a noise, you know, variance or whatever, if we put in restaurants or something that's right there on the Pine Curve, that's something that will obviously affect our neighborhood. And then just making sure that I'm twenty-six years of being here and having been in the business world, parks take up downs and all this, and we really don't want to make any of this be vacant property at any point. So if we're going to build it, let's make sure that we know we can get it occupied. Thank you.
Thank you.
talked about what some of the needs that the whole community sees. At this point, even where I live, I'm tired of seeing the properties vacant. I mean, we all know that there's lots of possibilities, and there have been lots of possibilities over the years. So when this little sheet asks, you know, are you for or against? I'm middle of the road. I'm not going to decide, kind of like Cheryl posed, she even said that we may have to wait and see what the design plans are. So I'm really up here mostly talking about how when you make the design plans, really gives consideration that we're not Castle Rock, we're not Aspen, we're not Vale. We are uniquely Parker. So whatever we can do to stay uniquely Parker would be fabulous. And like everybody else, concerned with traffic, parking, safety, especially along the trails, because when my kids and I have walked down, we usually avoid the streets and hit the trail. But that trail needs to stay secure and safe. The noise and the light situation worries obviously me, because I know over the last year or two, with even the tailgate getting a noise, you know, variance or whatever, if we put in restaurants or something that's right there on the Pine Curve, that's something that will obviously affect our neighborhood. And then just making sure that, I'm 26 years of being here and having been in the business world, parks take up downs and all this, and we really don't want to make any of this be vacant property at any point. So if we're going to build it, let's make sure that we know we can get it occupied. Thank you.
Thank you. You're already up. Come on down. You name an address for the record.
Certainly. My name's Peter St. Andre. I live at 8281 Ponderosa Lane in unincorporated Douglas County, right in Homestead Hills neighborhood, right outside of Parker. A lot of folks have talked about traffic downtown. I'm concerned about traffic in the surrounding areas. We live on Homestead. We've got one outlet onto Pine Drive. It's getting busier and busier. That light turns down here at Main Street, and let me tell you, you've got to wait a little while to get into traffic. We've got all that development going up in southeast Aurora there. Where are those folks going to come to eat? It's going to be Parker. And that's great. These folks, the Confluence folks, they've done the best job I've seen yet of putting together some plans for downtown Parker. So I think they've done a wonderful job, but I think we just need to take some into consideration, not just the downtown area itself, but like Parker Vista, all the areas around here, what the impact's going to be. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Shelley Mango. I have resided in Parker for 27 years. In fact, I was in mops with Cheryl, and our boys grew up together at the Methodist Church. I have seen Parker grow. I have seen it be a ghost town, to be honest with you, on Main Street. My kids played soccer in the Quanza Hut. I know it's kind of this memory of melancholy for many people to think about the Quanza Hut, but when it's all said and done, truly, I believe, Parker has developed amazing recreational centers that completely are way better than that Quanza Hut. I'm just going to tell you, when I was in that Quanza Hut, I thought it was going to fall on my head. So I'm very happy for development. Development's going to happen. Obviously, my husband stood up here. We are owners of buildings on Main Street. We have seen Main Street. From a walkable standpoint, I want to address the traffic and the walking. We are there every day. We walk up and down. It's actually exciting to see how many people. I'm surprised that Confluence didn't see more than one person, because we're there all the time, and we see lots of people walking up and down the street. However, they stop, and they have nowhere to go, because there's these pockets of emptiness. And I grew up in Ames, Iowa, where the downtown on Main Street in Ames, Iowa, was where everyone wanted to go. Everyone lived around Ames, but when you wanted to go downtown to shop and eat out, everyone went to Main Street. And it was fun. It felt like a downtown, like a small-town feeling. And even though I know traffic can be a question, and the town of Parker is addressing that, I have faith in Public Works. I have faith in everything that the town of Parker is doing to make sure that this is, you know, going to work out. And I also have faith in Confluence, Arvada, Old Town Arvada, Golden. You mentioned Castle Rock, but they've developed many cool downtown markets and areas, and I'm really looking forward, and I'm very much in support of this.
Feel like it's an auctioneer. No one wants to make eye contact with me, so I'll call you down. Anybody else wish to make a public comment? Go in once? Go in twice? All right, we're going to close the public comment period at 10:08 and proceed back to the council for final thoughts before we head to the vote. So I think I will start to my far right with Councilman Rivero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, I want to thank the audience members, the citizens. I've been up here 10 years, and I haven't had things thrown at me, but it's been rather violent sometimes, and I thought tonight was incredibly well-done. I thought you guys presented yourselves very, very well, and I'm truly appreciative of your caution and, you know, your concerns about what could happen. But I thought tonight was an incredibly civil discourse, and I thank you all very, very much for representing Parker in such a way. I too moved here a while back. My family came here in 1989 for horses. I think that was brought up by Mrs. Hack and maybe even Mr. King. But Parker was always the hub of the regional area. Downtown Parker is where you go, as Mrs. Mango said, for Ames, Iowa. It's where you go to entertain. We've done lots of things for kids. We've built fieldhouses and parks and whatnot, but we haven't emphasized entertainment for adults, and we haven't captured those adults. Mr. Kemplin talked on it, you know, actually, it was Chris, talking about people leaving town and going to Castle Rock and going to Lone Tree. We do. We have a Southlands, too, coming just outside our border in Lone Tree soon. You know, they're going to build the downtown, and they're going to bring in big chains, and they're going to bring in lots of stuff. We need to give our citizens something to compete with that, and not just our citizens. We are 60,000-strong, wonderful Parkerites, but my parents live out east, seven miles on Delbert, just past Delbert. I mean, there are tons of folks, Mr. St. Andre from Homestead Hills. There are tons of folks that this is their hometown, just because they don't live in town proper. They come down here to do their business. In the 10 years I've sat up here, we have searched for a partner, a lot of partners. A lot of you in this room have seen the partners we've gone through, partners that wanted to push everything at Pine Curve right up against to a big retaining wall that was going to be put right underneath Mrs. Hardy's backyard. Confluence is the first company that's come to us and listened, and said, "We don't need to take all square footage of Pine Curve. We don't need to fill that space. We are a partner with other communities, and we can see their record. We can see what they do." My fear, it's been brought up again, I believe, by Ms. Hack and some others, is what if this council doesn't act? What if we don't, and we let it sit vacant? What if a future council does come up here and sells it? They won't have the control that we have with this partnership. They won't have the design standards. It's just going to be zoning, and you guarantee that that zoning, they're going to go up to 60 feet. They're not going to build what the citizens want. They're not going to push a partnership and try to create something that the citizens are vested in. They're going to buy something, build it, sell it, and be out of town. And that's not what Confluence does. They are a Colorado company. They invest in Colorado. They live in Colorado. They're principals of Douglas County. It is what we are looking for. I'm anxious about the next steps. The next steps are deep. It's a deep dive. It's going to get fun. It's going to get complicated, but we're going to do it, because we represent the citizens up here, and it is our role to make the tough decisions. And from what I've heard tonight, I appreciate you testifying tonight. I've heard every single one of you. Thank you so much for spending a long evening with us.
Councilmember Pogue.
I'm concerned, because we're highly representative here tonight of the business community, not many residents. And so I think, you know, the discussion hasn't gone out there. This is happening. You know, I know you and your business community friends have a lot of discussions on it, because it makes a lot of difference to you financially. But I'm not opposed to development. I am opposed to how this is being done. I do not trust that we have no firm development plans at a time we're considering a sale. And yes, there may be a development plan, but this is going back and forth in a manner that's not normal. It is not normal development. That's my concern. So, you know, I probably won't be supporting this tonight. It doesn't mean that I'm against development. I want development, but I want development that the citizens want, and we have not taken steps to protect two pieces of property in town. We have five pieces for sale. We are not taking steps at this point with this agreement to protect the Pace Center. We are not protecting the issues that have been involved over the years with Pine Curve. Those are the two pieces of land that we have to protect, and there's nothing in here to do that. Period.
Councilman Hendricks.
So do you want any whiskey? Just asking. I racked my head about tonight. I'm pleasantly surprised with all the feedback and the decorum. I got sucked into the next-door trap. I have stacks of paper that has really no relevancy to tonight. You know, I pulled documents in the past, open records, when I was a citizen, sitting out there. You know, some people are freaked out about a height, but 60 feet's what is allowed, and I believe Parker Station's 57 feet. So we have an example. We have proof, and I think Parker Station's a nice building. I've lived here 18 years. I've seen what downtown was. It was a ghost town for the most part. It's gotten a lot better, but I think it could get even more better, which is not correct English. Sorry, I kind of ramble. So I was in Greeley last weekend for a tennis tournament, and I got to see their downtown. And, you know, people make fun of Greeley, but they have a choo downtown, and they have some businesses, and they do block parties and whatnot. And thinking about tonight, I decided to call Mayor Gray from Castle Rock and do some homework on Confluence. And I actually got a tour with some council members last fall around Castle Rock on e-bikes, and I thankfully didn't crash into anyone. But Mr. Mayor Gray said, "Business is good. Business is up 18%. And more importantly, the Confluence is a partner that does what they say." And, you know, they came here several months ago, talking about Pine Curve, they added a buffer, which they listened. The different development concepts are staggered, different heights, and within the ordinance, for example, this stack of paper, there's an ordinance passed 20 years ago that says four stories or 60 feet. You know, you hear five stories, but the 60 feet can contain five stories. So they listen. And, you know, I guess to finalize, I disagree with Councilmember Pogue about not hearing from citizens. A couple years ago, there was a very passionate group that tried to do a petition to get stuff on the ballot to not develop two of the five parcels. They actually agreed the three parcels are fine, but the two parcels they has issues with. And Confluence has, in their proposal, talked about a buffer with Pine Curve, and I agree with that. But the fact is, the petition group did not get enough signatures to get it on the ballot. And to me, the citizens have spoken, and it's time to move to the future.
Councilman Diack.
Thank you. I'm the analytic of the bunch. I'm a spreadsheet guy, so I can certainly, you know, create a speech, but I think we'll delay that for the next go-round. You know, I think everybody, every deal is different, especially when you have municipal-owned land that has been defined as surplus property. You know, to me, it's just, it's extremely challenging to figure out how to move forward. You know, I don't believe we're going to have 100% unanimous decision here, or conversely, out in public, but we are tasked with how to move forward. And so, you know, to me, this getting, trying to strip down Councilmember Hendricks' narrative, rant, I don't know what it was, words. We're here to consider the sale of five properties, to begin the conversation, so we can get to details, so we can figure out what the meat of this is. I think we have architectural renderings and concepts. You know, we were okay to move on to the next round, which this is what it is, a purchase and sale, which, you know, could be a misnomer by some. But again, the definition of a purchase and sale in this process is to get us to talking about the developmental agreement and all of those terms that are undefined, and we will not have definition until we move forward. And so to me, I would like to see that information, so I will be supportive of moving on. Thank you.
Councilmember Barrington.
Thank you, Mayor. So as of yesterday, I've lived in Parker for 21 years, and I've watched my kids grow up and the town grow up right alongside my kids. And I also believe, contrary to what another council member stated tonight as fact, I think we've, and I know not everybody spoke up tonight, so thank you for everyone that did, but I completely disagree. I think that there are a lot of people that are in support of development in downtown. I believe that we need the right growth in the right places, and downtown is where it needs to happen. So I don't want to see Parker turn into Castle Rock, and I don't think that's what's happening here. Every community that Confluence has developed looks very different and has a different flavor to it, and I think this is what Parker needs, and I'm excited about it, and I'm excited that business owners are excited about it. I've heard from people that the business owners don't want that. It's pretty clear that that's not the case. And also, I've heard that we're just having representation from business owners tonight, but there are a lot of business owners here that are also homeowners in the town of Parker. So I know that I'm one of them, and I'm here. I want to protect this town. This town has been great for me, for my family, and I want to see my kids come back and raise their families here, and they're not going to be able to do that if we have an old, tired Main Street. So I'm excited about this, and thank you, everyone who's come out in support.
Councilmember Hafda.
So tonight, I think, focusing on the big picture. Trust is a slow process, and over the past many months, our staff, our directors, our assistant planning attorney, Mr. Maloney, our town council, has been working on developing a trusting relationship with Confluence. And step by step, I have asked Mr. Maloney and Weldy how that process has been proceeding. And at each turn, they've informed me that Confluence continues to work with them, to negotiate with them. I think right now, at this point in time, we have at least five attorneys on this project. Mr. Maloney?
Well, principally, the real estate attorney that we're using downtown.
Terry Gurrell at Holland &amp; Hart. He is a real estate and finance specialist, and so he has been a huge asset and provided a lot of guidance in negotiating this agreement, along with Corey Hoffman, who's representing the Parker Authority for reinvestment, who you'll hear about later on in the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. And so to continue on, trust but verify. Mr. Maloney has outlined the steps that we have to take, and so this is the first step. The citizens and residents have provided their input tonight, and Confluence is listening. Our director of public works is listening. Our planning department is listening. Our entire town is listening to both the positive and the negative of what was offered here tonight. But as most folks here stated, growth is inevitable. We have five town-owned properties, and we don't want to be in the real estate business. And we have waited a long time, as Weldy has told us, to get this process going. So we have a choice tonight. Should we trust but verify with Confluence, who offers a balanced approach and a process? And as Mr. Maloney said, there's plenty of checks and balances along the way in the five-step process to make sure that resident concerns are heard and those issues are addressed. And so I think moving forward is the right choice right now, knowing that it's going to be a process, it's going to take time, and that at each step, you're going to trust but verify, and if we need to adjust as we go, we will. And if we need to negotiate harder, we will. I trust that we are engaging in this process with an open mind and that... I, I trust that we are engaging in this process with an open mind, and that the residents will continue to provide their input. Thank you.
Great, thank you. With that, we will entertain a motion on ordinance number 1.563.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 1.563 on second reading, please.
My second. Motion is made by Councilman Rivero, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. Rivero?
Aye.
Pogue?
No.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Diack?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that motion passes five to one with Cheryl Pogue voting no. With no other business before the Parker Town Council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. But there's more. But who's that? And you want to adjourn? All right. Motion is made by Councilmember Barrington.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. All in favor?